Okay, great. Well, we'll start out our meeting tonight as we usually do with poetry reading. This month, of course, is a special poetry month. It's 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 poetry month all throughout April. And so we have several guest poets, I think, lined up for this month from our poets council. And tonight, our poet who's going to read for us is Jay Bryan. So Jay, I can, there you go. I can, we can see you and now we can hear you. So it's good to hear.
Good to see all of you. Happy April Poetry Month. Quickly, I know you have a busy night. I wanted to bring your attention to a headline. The News and Observer. Can you train a cat? Many years ago, Jackie was on the board, too. The issue of leasing dogs and cats came up before us. I know you all, you you deal with very important contentious issues, but that was a challenge. And the cat leash lobby was extremely strong. With, you know, compelling stories about sand lots for their children getting cat doing them and birds being killed and so on. Anyway, we we, I think we decided to agree to leash dogs, but but not cats. I do remember explaining to Randy Marshall, our esteemed Carboro principal, that there is a difference between dogs and cats. So I don't, I don't know. We'll, we'll see about whether they can be trained, but bring that memory to you because it was interesting. So I'm gonna read, yeah, absolutely. I'm gonna read a poem called Standing in the Shallows. Essentially coming from a lake in Maine, which I grew up going to and a journey of diving into it and some aspects to that. Called Standing in the Shallows. Looking out, no more afraid. The gray glass ceiling of pink edged clouds. Are diving all the way to the bottom, clear, resolved. Are bubbling down, up, the lazy following of friendly minnows. Float, drift, spread our arms. Nothing moves, changes. Everything moves, changes. An absolute calm, lost misunderstanding, regret, despair. The scars left on my sister's legs by her razor. Gone, poof, into smoke. Rising into the immense, into the a-bless. We rise to, in this moment, to sit on the right hand and be gently returned and slip again into the lake's folds. Our mother's warm embrace. A deep breath, a sigh of contentment. Our eyes closed and are opened. Okay.
Awesome. Thank you. Great way to start out poetry month.
Little refreshment. Yeah, thank you for your proclamation and for your support to the poets council and for the the poetry festival and other things that we do and for the arts in general. Appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you, Jay. Thanks for being with us.
I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
So that seems like a nice little segue into this proclamation. Claring April is poetry month. So let me go ahead and read this. Whereas as we enter the second year of the coronavirus pandemic, it continues to be ever so timely for a proclamation recognizing the value and essence of poetry to be and whereas the Academy of American Poets established the month of April as National Poetry Month in 1996, making this year a celebration of the 25th anniversary of this annual celebration. And where National Poetry Month seeks to highlight the extraordinary legacy and ongoing achievement of American poets, introduce the pleasures and benefits of reading poetry, bring poets and poetry to the public in immediate innovative ways, and make poetry an important part of our children's education. Poetry enhances and enriches the lives of all Americans and as an essential part of the arts and humanities affects every aspect of life, including education, the economy, and community pride and development. And whereas National Poetry Month, under the leadership and direction of the Academy of American Poets, is the largest literary celebration in the world. And whereas Poem in Your Pocket Day takes place this year on Thursday, April 29. On this date, people are urged to select a poem and carry it with them to share with others. This on this date, people to share their poems also on social media with the hashtag Pocket Poem. Carboro established the position of poet laureate in 2002. The current poet laureate being Fred Joyner, the poet laureate coordinates the opening of every Carboro Town Council meeting with the reading of a poem. And as the town of Carboro will celebrate National Poetry Month with of local poets, poets reading from their works. On Monday, April 26, 2021, emailed Dana Hughes at the Recreation Parks and Cultural Resources Department at D Hughes at townofcarboro.org to get a Zoom link to this event. Whereas as Joe, Joy Harjo, U.S. poet laureate, an Academy of American Poets chancellor has said, without poetry, we lose our way. Now therefore be resolved, I Lydia Valmere of Carboro, do proclaim the month of April 2021 as poetry month in Carboro. I urge everyone in the town to take this month to read selections of poetry and to share the gift of poetry with others. This, the sixth day of April 2021. So that's one of my very favorite proclamations to to issue. And I remember last year, I think it was the first one we issued after the pandemic began. And we decided to go forward with it. There were a few we didn't go forward with, but that was one Kathy, remember, we decided we needed, so. Okay, y'all. Next, we have announcement of upcoming meetings and let's hear this from our from our floor.
Yeah. And just before I get into that, we are having technical difficulties. So the live stream on TV is not working. If you are looking for the link on the website through the Legisart calendar, scroll to the bottom. It's showing past June. So just scroll. It's there. But the easiest way to watch this meeting is through YouTube. So through the town's YouTube channel. Is that what he was saying, Councilmember Fishy? Was he having some problems with it?
I am not on TV.
I saw him come through. I was like, I think I know what he's doing. Yeah, tell him YouTube and he's and Rob's trying to get us fixed. So I'll let you know if we do go live. You're welcome.
Okay, yeah.
All right. We had our Youth Advisory Board meeting today at 4:30. So thank you, Councilmember Siles, for being there. And I think most of you have scheduled with me to attend in May. If if you haven't, please get with me. We would love to have you and have space for you. The Stormwater Advisory Commission will meet April 8 at 6:30 PM. The Recreation and Parks Commission will meet April 12 at 7 PM. And you all will meet again here April 13 at 7 PM.
Okay, thanks Kathy. Anyone else have any other announcements about any other meetings? I think let's go Damon and then Jackie.
Just quickly, I think Randy can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're holding next Monday evening for a possible joint meeting of the Greenways Commission and the Recreation and Parks Commission. I think that's right. So we'll hope to have more information about that soon if that ends up actually being confirmed. So thanks.
Okay, thanks Damon. Jackie?
I'm sorry, you said announcement. It's not a meeting, but it is an announcement. I want to remind people, and please share this with your community and your contacts, that the applications are open for this summer's arts apprenticeship application. It's for high school and college students who live in Carboro to do a arts apprenticeship. Doesn't matter where. If they have trouble finding one, we can help them through the Orange County Arts Commission to find an apprenticeship. So it's a great opportunity. The arts supports Carboro. We need to support the arts. And right off the bat, I want young artists to understand that they need to get paid for their work. And this is part of it.
Okay, all right. Great. Thanks, Jackie. Let's see, Randy?
Yeah, I also wanted to give a shout out to the Affordable Housing Meaning of the Minds Affordable Housing Panel Discussion. Also taking place next Monday between 5 and 6. And it's put together by the IFC and the CEF folks. So those folks who are interested in hearing and you know, a conversation about affordable housing. That's going to be an interesting panel to listen to. I also wanted to make a quick announcement and give a roaring shout out to UNC basketball for hiring Hubert Davis. Oh, oh, man. Yeah, we love you, Roy. But you know, graduation is graduation. And Hubert, we're very excited to 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 know that you're taking the reins.
Yeah, thanks, Randy. I think I saw on Facebook that he's a former classmate of former mayor Mayor Mark Chilton's. So kind of that his pointing out all the things that his class, I guess, have done. So.
Yeah, we 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 knew him from when he was on on the team. Yeah.
Susan?
Yeah, thank you, Lydia. I just also wanted to make an announcement that tomorrow in Orange County, everyone over 16 years of age and over is eligible to get vaccinated. And I understand you can call Orange County Health Department to make an appointment. You can also visit myspot.nc.gov where you can get information on the closest vaccine provider to you.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Susan. I know we're really going to be pushing that out to everyone. Our Catless Orco, our communications manager is going to be pushing that out so that everyone gets the word that it's it's going to be a free for all. Everyone needs to go all get their shots. So awesome. Thank you. Okay, so we have requests for visitors and speakers from the floor. I know we have, I think, one person signed up to speak generally, right Kathy? Andrew Lerner, is that right?
My hand up, Lydia, before you go.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, Barbara, I didn't see it.
That's okay. I just wanted to follow up on what Randy said about Hubert Davis. And it's a historic hire. You know, because he is the first African American to lead the UNC basketball program. And and in my mind, you know, that's, you know, that's everything, you know, for a program of that size and that magnitude. So we're just happy to see him get the nod and and get a chance to lead.
Yeah, that's great, Barbara. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so Kathy, I think Mr. Lerner is someone we have signed up.
Yep, that's right. So if you are in the attendee mode right now, you can see the council. And when it's your turn to speak, I will promote you over. So it will drop on your screen and say reconnecting. Don't worry, that is supposed to happen. So I'll bring you over now, Mr. Lerner.
Hey, thanks y'all for taking my call.
Hi, Mr. Lerner.
Hey, so shall I kick it off?
Yeah, you have you have a soft three minutes to talk to us about whatever you want to talk about.
Okay, great. Just put my virtual background on there for you. So yeah, thank you all for listening to our concerns regarding the Sanderway development. We we came before the board and the town council previously numerous times with concerns over stormwater runoff and access to our properties. I'm a resident of 1242 Hillsborough. We use Horn Hollow, our driveway to access our property and our adjacent neighbors 1244 and 1246 also have only this one driveway to access our properties. So we spoke before you at length about concerns over stormwater runoff and disruptions to access to our properties. And again, many of those concerns were addressed very well in the construction management plan and the conditional use permit. We were working with Jeff Cleveland quite a bit. He was very responsive to our concerns, but since his departure, our concerns have not been addressed specifically as the developer has interrupted our access to our properties. Again, this is our only means of access. And according to the terms of the construction management plan and the conditional use permit, or as required by the conditional use permit, he's required, the developer is required to provide access or uninterrupted access for emergency vehicles, a bypass route when interruptions are greater than one hour. And that has not been happening. And frankly, we don't know who to turn to. It doesn't sound like there's anyone really managing this on the town side. I don't know what to expect. I've never had to deal with this before. But our our access to our properties is being severely hampered. And what we're really most concerned about is not past infractions, as I detailed in a letter to the town council. But what's going to happen once they start trenching across our driveway? We've had our own contractors who haven't been able to access our property. We're all at home. And we can't get out sometimes. And we're not notified in advance. And when we ask the developer, why not? We get excuses and he doesn't take any responsibility for abiding by the terms of the construction management plan and the conditional use permit. So at this point, we're so frustrated. Do I call the police nonemergency line? I don't know what to do. So that's why we're here today. And thank you for your time.
Okay, great. Thank you for coming to us. I guess I'd like to ask our our acting town manager, Trish McGuire, who is also our planning director. I don't know, Trish, if you want to give any response to Mr. Lerner's concerns.
I don't have a detailed response. I do know that we have, there's been some communication, but I do understand that it is not reaching the level of responding to the residents' needs. And so I've discussed with Marty, you know, following up with Bill Spang and others about the the specifics related to the project. And so that's, I have not checked in with him, though, about that, you know, today or even yesterday. As a matter of fact, we spoke. We spoke last Thursday about this. So I will, I mean, it is something that we're aware of and and are making the the developer aware of, you know, what we believe they need to do out there. So.
Right. Thanks, Trish. And and let me get a few comments here from board members. We got Jackie and then Barbara.
I'm sorry that's happening to you and your neighbors, Andrew. That's some, it's not fair. And particularly now, I think it would be even even harder to put up with. I'm really sorry. That's a condition of their permit. Tricia, at what point, and I hope the answer is soon, would we be able to issue a stop work order until you abide by 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 the permit? Or can we at least tell them that if they don't, then we will be issuing a stop work order?
I mean, I I think I'm hesitant to make a blanket statement only because it's sort of depends on what, you know, could they move a vehicle over while we're standing there telling them to move it? So there's clearly access. So I think that we will use the tools we need to use, though, to provide the neighbors with the access they're supposed they're supposed to have to their homes.
I mean, this is enough of a disruption to their lives, just having a construction going on around them. And I would hope that the people who would be moving into these homes would become part of the community. That's going to be hard to do when you have feelings of having been locked out of your own home or locked into your own home for for months on end. So remind them that these are legal documents that they have signed and we expect them to abide by them.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Jackie. Let's go to Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Lerner, for for coming in and and sorry about the difficulty that you're having. I agree with what Jackie said 100%. I was gonna, you know, similar to what she said. And I, you know, it sounds like this has been going on for a while. So I would not think that we would keep allowing it to happen. And as as Trish said, that we would use all tools that are available to us so that the residents there can can have the access that they need and that they deserve. So just kind of want to put that out there. And sooner rather than later. Trish, you know, however it can get done.
Thanks, Barbara. I think you're you two are probably echoing, I think, the sentiments of everyone here. And I mean, we're all familiar with Horn Hollow and and can see, understand, especially with during the pandemic being stuck there and things being kind of uncertain as your ability to to get out. So so Trish, here's the concerns and we'll get on this. So Randy, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, Andrew, I I walk down your road at least once every week and it's absolutely, it becomes impassable. And and I'm saying this so that Trish understands that there is no place for a vehicle to get around those trucks. And it's early enough in the process, this is going to be, this is going to be for quite some time to come because of the nature of the access to where the actual construction is. So I really appreciate what Trish had to say and of course Jackie and Barb. But I also would encourage Andrew to, you know, to keep us apprised and let us know if the the game plan for the town staff is followed through by the developer. So thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Sammy?
Yeah, just not to add to what everyone who has spoken has said, because I also agree with it. If Trish, you could also keep the
All right, Mr. Lerner. Thanks for coming to see us.
Thanks for your time. Take care.
We appreciate it. All right. Take care. All right, then. This manager, this acting manager, Trish, brought to the consent agenda then.
Absolutely. Mayor and members of the council, we have five consent agenda items for you this evening. Is my voice loud enough for you, first of all? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear. Yep.
The first item is approval of the minutes from the February 23, March 2, and March 9, 2021 meetings. And with the edits from council members Siles and Romaine for the March 9 minutes. The second item is the EPA 319 program grant for stormwater management and stabilizing erosion in residential areas near Bowlin Creek. The third item is authorization for the town manager to sign an interlocal agreement related to the current and future use of the jointly owned Green tract. Fourth item is requests to authorize the town manager to sign an application related to potential creation of affordable housing on town and land. And the fifth item is appointments to the planning board.
Great. Thank you. Let's go Barbara and then Sammy.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a motion that we move all five items if there's no further discussion.
All right, let's get a motion by Barbara, second by Jackie. Let's see, Sammy. Sammy, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I needed, I wanted to pull three.
Okay. And anyone else ready? Do you want to pull something? Randy, do you want to pull something?
No, Sammy pulled three and that's the one I wanted.
Okay, so so Barbara, do you mind making your motion then for 1, 2, 4, 5?
Uh huh. Yeah, I make a motion that we move 1, 2, 4, and 5 on the consent agenda.
And then Jackie's second. Okay, so all in favor of that motion, say aye, Randy?
Aye.
Me, aye, Sammy?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Damon?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Okay, so then Sammy and then Randy, comments about number three.
Yes, thanks. Nick, I was just wondering about some of the language in the mediation on page five. It says that the governing boards of the parties must approve any mediated resolution. And it sounds pretty binding. And I I don't, I mean, if if we weren't being put to a vote, a vote implies that that we have a choice. And and I just want to understand what what the meaning of that phrase is and whether whether something like that can be said or if it could be worded differently, if that's not what what's meant.
Well, what the provision means is that you know, the first step, if you have a dispute, is to have a so-called resolution meeting. You're not talking about that provision, but I just point that out to you. And if that fails, then then the three parties are required to mediate the dispute. And one of two things will happen. The parties will come up with a proposal that they think that they that resolves the matter. Or at the end of the mediation, they're going to know that they're in logger, at loggerheads, or think they might be. But in order to approve an agreement that is an outgrowth of the mediation, you're going to require that each board is going to have to vote on the proposed agreement. But they're not required to agree. I mean, either, you know, Carboro would either agree or not agree to whatever proposal would would be out there. So mediation as a process is required of the parties, but not the outcome. And the only reason apparently for the sentence about approval of a mediation agreement is that any agreement that any jurisdiction enters into is going to have to be signed off on by the vote of the majority of the board.
Okay, so yeah, I'm just, that phrase can be interpreted different ways. Like, one way to read it is that we must approve of it. We must vote for it as a council. But what it means is that for it to be valid, we would all have to vote on it. So what I'm asking for is just a we would all have to vote on it. So what I'm asking for is just a better phrase that isn't as ambiguous and can be so misinterpreted.
Yeah, you know, let me tell you that, Sammy, once you wrote your email about this, you know, I read your concern about this. I hadn't recognized the ambiguity until you pointed it out. And I get where you're coming from. Although I will say it's, it's, it's clear, at least to me, here's one thing to think about. Yeah, it could be revised, but this same agreement is going to every jurisdiction to sign off on. I know what the lawyers are going to tell their boards in terms of the interpretation of this. All of us have been involved in this. So the, the upside of doing what you're doing is to erase an ambiguity that you caught. Even though all of the lawyers will instruct their boards about exactly what I just said. The downside of, of, of going through that is you, you know, you got all these boards voting on this. Has anybody approved this already?
Well, Nick, let me, let me ask you this, because I, I'll, I'll address that. But can you tell me exactly what sentence it is that, that is the ambiguous one that Sammy or Sammy can, whichever?
If you look at page five and you look at the subheading mediation.
Right.
The last line.
The governing boards of the parties must approve any mediated resolution.
Oh, any mediated, yeah, resolution. And so if you, Sammy's right, if you just sort of read that.
Right, I get it.
Within the context, it's like, well, first of all, it assumes that there is some mediated resolution, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But what Sammy's saying, and he was right about this in his email, almost sounds like you got to agree. You, you just have to. But that, that's never the case. The, the process of mediation is required, not that you end up coming to an agreement.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I, I see the situation. Well, so we're looking at this tonight. The Board of County Commissioners is looking at it tonight. I mean, you know, frankly, I could probably, we could probably text someone there about our concern tonight if we had to switch a sentence. I don't know, maybe, maybe not. And then tomorrow night Chapel Hill's considering it. So, but, but also I, I, I see the ambiguity, Sammy, but but I also kind of read it that if there is a mediated resolution, of course, all the governing boards have to approve it. I, I kind of view it the same way that Nick does. That it's not saying that everyone must, it's saying if there is a mediated resolution, then all the boards have to approve it. You know, it's kind of, so I don't know, I don't know. Trish, what do you think? How complicated would it be for us to revise this sentence slightly? And then try to get it to the Board of County Commissioners? I text tonight or something and then I could get it certainly before tomorrow, because I was instructed to do so if anything changed.
We, I mean, Marty could potentially try to email Ashley Moncato and, and, and see if she, he could catch her. I don't know where this is in the lineup for county's consideration tonight. But he could certainly check in, in a few minutes and see if.
Yeah.
As a practical matter, one thing to think, again, I'm trying to honor Sammy here because he did catch something that, I mean, if it bothered him, it's going to bother some others. But you're going to have to then, the boards are going to want the advice. The Chapel Hill board is going to go to Ann Anderson, say, what, how do you think we ought to resolve? How do you think we ought to erase this? And then the Orange County is going to go to John. John was the principal draftsman of this, even though this has been going on for a year and a half now. We've had at least two meetings on this. The lawyers and with representatives and planning folks and all kinds of stuff. So that's fine, but, but if we change this, we're going to be putting the brakes on this until.
Right.
I mean, just know that there's no problem with that. I just want you to know as a practical matter that, that's what's going to happen if we put the brakes on it.
Yeah.
Good. Sammy?
I, I understand. I mean, but, but the whole reason for us to sign off on some things for this purpose, maybe in the future, we could have a better process where something can go before the councils for feedback before they're asked to approve of it. But we're not there unfortunately. So the next best recourse is to fix it. My, my issue is that I can imagine, and I've already seen this on with other documents, including the current green tract one, where there's ambiguities that years later, people are trying to figure out. And that's partly because of not, not, not catching them early on and really expressing what the intention is of the people who are signing off on it now. So that, that's one aspect of it that I'm concerned about. But there's another more significant one that I'm worried about. And it relates to the difference between the current agreement and the one that we're looking at now. My understanding is that in the current agreement, there's more, there's more of a ability of Carboro, for example, or any jurisdiction for that matter, to sell their portion of this property to someone else. And in this one, we're, we're kind of giving the right of first refusal to the other two members of this. And, and I'm just not sure if, if that is exactly what we want to do. I, I would think that we want to have that conversation first to see if that, that's what we want to do before we lock ourselves into that. So I'm just uncomfortable generally with jumping into, and I recognize there's a lot of work and thought that's been put into this and I'm appreciative of that. But I, I just doesn't, what's currently being presented doesn't sit well with me. So that's a more, that's a deeper thing. And I understand if people want to rush and vote on this, I'm just not ready to vote on it tonight.
Okay, yeah, I, I'll, I'll go to Barbara in a minute, but you know, I've, I'm on the record several times saying that I, I think there might come a point where Carboro ends up selling our interests, you know? And I, but I have, I guess I have always imagined that selling our interest would be to the county or to Chapel Hill. I haven't imagined selling it to, to someone else. But I don't know, I can hear from others and see what they think too. Let's go. I saw Barbara's hand up.
Yeah. And so I'm appreciative of what, what Sammy is raising. And I guess my question is, like, when we talk about delay, like what? Nick said something about the delay, you know, if, if we want to, you know, actually investigate, you know, this or, or make a change, you know, some change with the wording. So could it be going around, I mean, could we get it done by June?
Oh, wait, are you, are you talking about more substantive changes than just the sentence Sammy talked about?
No, I'm talking about Sammy, what Sammy specifically is talking about, that, that ambiguity with that, that sentence.
First part of what I was talking about.
Yeah, I feel, I, I feel like, I don't know, Nick, and Trish, but I feel like that if we had to rework that sentence, you know, I feel like that seems like it's, well, I don't know, I, maybe I shouldn't speak for the other jurisdictions. That doesn't seem like that big a deal to me that it couldn't get on someone's consent agenda in a couple of weeks, but it might open the door to other massive changes. I don't know.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
If I can share this general view, I, my view is that if you're uncomfortable with signing an agreement, we ought to take the time to have your questions answered and get it right. You know what I mean? I mean, it's not as if the sky's not falling if this isn't happening tonight. I mean, we've been, you know what I mean? And so I, nothing about what I've suggested is intended to put the thumbs on the scale. It's actually quite the opposite, that I, I think you should be comfortable with it. And if there are questions raised, and Sammy, there may be some others, you know, there, there's a clause at the end here about divestiture of your interest. You know what I mean? Which then implicates the other agreement. You, you know what I mean? And what can happen there?
Well, I think this one, this one cancels the other agreement, I think.
Well, no, no, this is a process, this is just a process agreement. It doesn't change the shares and the underlying agreement. But I don't want to belabor this, but I, I, I do want you to know, I think it would hold it up, but I mean, this thing has been held up quite a while anyway, right? I mean, no one's doing anything.
Yeah, but we want to, we want to roll it along though, if we can.
In the end, it says, just to follow up on Nick's understanding, it says entire agreement, this agreement constitutes the entire agreement of the parties heretofore and supersedes all prior agreements between or among the parties regarding uses of the property and any such agreements and are hereby declare void. This agreement is effective the day, so I'm reading that to mean this does cancel a previous agreement.
Well, the other one doesn't deal with uses.
But this says this cancels every other agreement.
But every other agreement related to the interlocal agreement, right? Or, or is that not right?
And maybe that needs to be clarified as well.
Um, Nick, I don't have the previous agreement.
Well, look, what, again, if you all have an ambiguity, to me, it's not ambiguous. What it cancels is any prior agreement that relates to the uses of the property. We don't have a prior agreement that relates to the uses of the property.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks for that clarification.
Thanks, thanks, Nick. And, and to be clear, I understand that, that Sammy thinks that sentence, sentence is ambiguous. I'm, I'm comfortable with the sentence the way it is, but I'm also, if, if, if more of us than not want to have it clarified, I'm okay with that also. But let's, let's hear about other concerns because I know Randy had it pulled also.
Yeah, well, I, all right, just to respond to, to what we're talking about right now on division or sale. And, and Nick, this is why I, I'm not sure, I, I want to understand where Sammy's grasping a different meaning. It says no party shall, and then when you get to number two, it says enter into any agreement to sell mortgage or otherwise transfer all or any part of, of its ownership interest in the property without first offering it to other parties.
Yeah.
So that is the filter by which it couldn't be sold without the, without the other parties being a, a part of that conversation. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's pretty clear. I mean, in other words, if we want to sell our 14% interest, we have to at least give an option to do that to the other folks first.
Right.
That's a commitment.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And I think the, the only other thing that I was interested in when I wanted to pull this was, you know, should the, I want to understand how the conversations come about and whether or not in the agreement, there needs to be an agreement to have discussions that are focused on some of the housing, the very specific housing interests we have for those folks who are being dislocated as a result of manufactured homes, et cetera, et cetera. Does that need to be specified in this or, or is it okay as it is?
Yeah, I think it's okay. Well, what you got to remember is that this is, was an effort to provide an agreement about process. You know what I mean? But then again, the question is, how much process do you want to agree to? You know, and how much process, do you want to just an outline of a process, right? Or do you want to be more detailed about certain, different process depending on the subject matter, right? And I, by the way, all of that's your call. The way this came about was I was invited to some meeting with the lawyers, this is about a year ago or more, right? And all the planners showed up, you know, and then we had another one. And then didn't Lydia, didn't you attend the last one?
I've been at every one, yep.
Yeah, I've been at every one, you know, and, and they, and all the folks around the room were just trying to do their best, but of course, totally absent from the room are all you guys.
Yeah, so, so Nick, so, 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 you know, just to remind everyone where we are with this. You know, a part of this is because, you know, we can't really get all 21 elected official owners in the same room to hammer this all out. You know, part of it is, we talk, you know, I carry forward our priorities, our concerns, our issues. You know, I kind of bring them to the group of, of whoever the chair is, whoever the mayor of Chapel Hill is. We talk it out, we hash it out. We get feedback. We come back to you all and you all agree to it or don't agree to it or whatever. I'm kind of like the conduit back and forth to the other folks, rather than all 24 of us or 22 of us, whatever it is, getting in a room and just kind of talking randomly about it. I think, you know, that's, that's obviously a, a good way for all of us to get our, our, our stamp on, on it individually and, and as a board and as a council, you know, and bring that forward to the whole group. I'm not going to say it's all going to work out hunky dory. I hope it does, you know? But, um, you know, that's, I think that's, it's not a perfect process, but I don't know, it seems to be perhaps the most efficient way we can try to move forward with this. And part of this was trying to lay that out so we can all three be involved and be involved equally and be able to really get across what we all want. Because ultimately this thing goes before the Chapel Hill Town Council. And they're the ones who thumb it up or thumb it down or prove it, go through their process. So as you know, we wanted to make sure as co-owners, we could really get our views across to the other two entities that own it. So they know where we're coming from.
Yeah, well, the, I'm not arguing that question. I think that that's, that's appropriate. It makes sense. But you know, it does say that it's, the agreement shall automatically renew for five, five-year terms unless sooner terminated. So, you know, this is looking at, okay, if nothing is settled, you know, we've got this five-year block or the next five-year block. That's the reason why I kind of feel having something that addresses the awareness that there is and there will continue to be dislocation as a result of the development of manufactured home sites. And that this, this green tract is, is a site because we all own it, we could make that commitment. And I'm just putting it out there because it does not make any sense to me when we know that we have families in need and we jointly own property, that we're not specifying that there, that in the plan should be addressing for Carboro specifically, the option to have our four manufactured home sites have dedicated space.
Yeah, I think that has to be part of, of, of the, the detailed conversation that we have out of this skeleton about how it works. You know, I mean, we haven't even gotten into the nitty gritty of how many, how much, how tall, how big, on what space. I mean, we do have the certain percentages, but, and that's where the rubber's going to hit the road, y'all, is when we really try to get into some details about what exactly we're looking for out there, like what Randy's talking about. But I don't think this is the place to have that, we can't have that level of detail in this agreement. Trish, you're, are you, are you hearing what I'm saying? Are you in agreement with that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Part three of this agreement is all about the public engagement that needs to happen in association or to frame the exploration of those uses that are spelled out here, the 66 acres for the development of affordable housing and other affordable and mixed income housing and other uses. And then the school site with recreation and additional green space or additional, you know, conservation area. So that is, that is fundamental. And, and really, this agreement is trying, as I guess Nick has said and others have said, is trying to set the stage so everybody understands what the process, how we will proceed to the next step, working together.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Trish. Good, good summary there. Sammy?
Nick, sorry, I'm, I'm still digesting that last number eight, entire agreement. And it's again, an instance of an ambiguity that's not sitting well with me. It says, this agreement constitutes the entire agreement of the parties here too. The, the, the rest of that phrase is, is an and, but it's saying that this agreement constitutes the entirety.
With regard to uses of property.
No, but and uses, right? But it's talking about the entire agreement of the parties. So and the, the part about the use is what I'm concerned about. I haven't looked at the previous agreement to say, to see if there's, there is or not any mention of what the uses are. So in essence, if we're reading it the way you were first interpreting it, if the original agreement mentions uses, then that should, that one would be void because that's what you're interpreting it to say here. But I'm, I'm reading it more broadly. I'm, I'm, I'm reading this agreement constitutes the entire agreement on both counts. I'm not comfortable with it.
Well, fair enough. And, and, and if y'all decide that we go back to them, we, we need to flag that as well. I do have an opinion about what it means, but that's not a reason not to clarify it.
All right, thanks, Nick. And I'm sorry, somehow I've been skipping over Barbara and I apologize. I'm going to go to Barbara and then Damon.
Can I just point out? Um, can I just point out Barbara, um, I've noticed you, you, when you raise your hand, it's sometimes off screen. So maybe, maybe if you.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I think I'm just gonna start using the phrase.
Yeah, I see that, I see that little hand now, Barbara. Go ahead.
Thank you, thanks, Sammy. Um, and so just to bring all this uh, back around, um, overall, I'm okay with, with this agenda item. Um, Lydia raised a great question earlier about um, a conversation we might want to consider in the future as our interests, you know, in the green track. And if we want to continue to move forward in these five-year blocks, you know, or however it, you know, however it goes along. Um, but certainly, um, I, I do hear Sammy and I, um, that's why I was asking, you know, how long would it take? You know, for that to be addressed. I feel like, you know, for something like this, even if it's one of us, I feel like it should be addressed, so.
Yeah, but by the way, ju- just for both Barbara and Randy that have mentioned this, actually, you can get out of this agreement all of them with 60 days notice. Okay, so uh, it, it's a good point. If you were talking about five years, but two months, you can, under any circumstance, you sign it on day one, you could be out in 60 days if you wanted to.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Nick, for pointing that out. That five years is kind of keeping the agreement going. So let's go to Damon.
Um, I think, you know, I'm fine with the agreement as it is. If there needs to be clarification of that sentence on page five that, that Sammy raised, I think it would be fine if, if, you know, I just want to make sure that we're confining revisions to the specific instances where there is some ambiguity. Um, I don't find the other part that Sammy raised to be unclear at all. I think it's clearly referring to previous agreements regarding uses of land. Um, I'm open to clarification of that issue about the mediated resolution. Um, I'm just, I'm very wary of this again, kind of, because we've been through this before, right? Of this opening it all up again, right? I feel like we've got a good agreement here. This meant to sk- sketch out, but this meant to frame the process we need to go through to get to the next stage, and I'm comfortable with doing that. Um, and if there needs to be a clarification of that one sentence, that's fine, but I hope that we won't be opening up a can of worms here.
So um, I guess I'd like to ask Trish, that one, that one sentence that's um, you know, kind of this ambiguous, um, what is your thinking about, about if we ask um, the other two parties to make that sentence more clear? Um, do you think we could get this back? Uh, do, do you think we could do that rather quickly? Uh, it seems fairly straightforward to me, but again, um, you know, you deal, you're the one that deals with the day-to-day hands-on um, stuff here.
I think we have a meeting scheduled on the third week or so of this, of this month, um, I believe. So, I mean, we could bring it back to the mayor's manager chair meeting. If that, and I think that's when you would bring it back for discussion.
What if we, what if we approved it with a, a new sentence tonight? And, and I mean, the worst that could happen is that we had to approve it with a different sentence in a few weeks. But what if we clarified that sentence tonight? And we approve it, we can tell Chapel Hill what it is and have Marty email it over to the board uh, of County Commissioner. So, so Nick, that sentence.
Yeah, I, I, but I don't have a way of doing it because I think, see, I think it's clear. Um, once you get into a speech, um, uh, I'm open to suggestions, but uh, I didn't write it.
Wouldn't taking it out, the, I mean, it's kind of redundant. Obviously, like, we would need to sign off on it, um. But it's not a mandate that we must approve it. We must, we must vote on it is what we must do.
Um, how about, um, i- i- this might sound ridiculous, but in order to resolve the dispute, the governing boards of the parties must approve an immediate resolution.
Cool. Well, that, that admits to the same ambiguity because if you get hot, if you put the emphasis on the word must, you say.
How about this, this mediation will only be valid after governing boards approve?
Well, no, because the me, the mediation, it's not the mediation that's valid. It's whether you have a binding agreement between the parties as a result of the mediation.
What if it said something like, the agreement will be binding, um, will, will be binding.
Contingent.
Can, yeah, I'm getting there, Sammy. Um, can, contingent on approval by each of the governing bodies.
Uh, hang, hang on, that, that might, okay, hang on.
Y'all, I know this is painstaking, but I think it's better than waiting another four to five weeks to get this um, done, so.
So the, the agreement will be binding, um, contingent upon approval by each of the governing bodies.
I'm writing this down. The agreement will be binding contingent upon approval um, uh, by, yeah, by each of the governing. Sammy, you're the one who's the ambiguity expert. Did that help you?
Yeah, that, that's a lot clearer, yes. Thank you. Um, okay, it helps me. I'm, I'm still not comfortable with the last one. Um, for that reason, I, I won't be approving of this tonight, uh, but I seem to be comfortable with it.
Okay, thanks, Sammy. Uh, Trish.
Uh, I just wanted to say that Marty alerted me to the fact that the meeting's actually this Friday, not, not in a couple of weeks, so we'll be back with the other uh, mayor's managers and chairs on Friday.
Okay, uh, thank you, thank you. I think that if we can though, I think that it might be good for us if we can to move forward with this agenda item with that sentence re- and then um, Trish, if possible, if we could have Marty, you know, email it over. I can also text Renee and tell her it's common. And then, you know, let Chapel Hill know that this one sentence, we, we wrote it a little bit, so. Um, so is there a motion for this with that sentence amended? By Barbara, second by Susan. All in favor, say aye. Randy?
Aye.
Me, aye. Sammy?
Nay.
Barbara?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Damon?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
All right, very good, great.
Thank you for that, Jackie.
I wasn't philosophy major for nothing.
Yeah, thank you. You saved, you saved me.
All right.
Philosophy saves the world, yeah.
Okay, um, for moving on then, um, Trish, Trish is like multitasking, I know. I'm moving on to our next.
Your next item is a public hearing. The, and the purpose of this item is to provide the town council an opportunity to receive an update on the design process for the 203 project. Um, and to approve the principal building design features identified to date. And Derek Jones from Perkins and Will is joining us. Um, I may have two slides to walk through at the beginning of his presentation. Um, and as we emailed to you, he's gonna focus on the um, architectural topics, but uh, will um, I'd be able to answer your questions about uh, stormwater and other information that we included in materials we sent out earlier. You want me to cover those slides, Derek?
Yes, please, please. Here you go.
Just wanted to update everyone on what's been happening recently. You'll recall that November 10th is the approval of the schematic design. Um, we did bring back to you in January, the principal design elements that we had to that point as we were working in the design development stage, the plans. Um, with your uh, direction, we took the uh, that information to advisory boards and we took them to a number of advisory boards in March. Um, everyone from the Appearance Commission to the, when it's all the way at the end of the alphabet. Um, Transportation Advisory Board. So, um, got great comments back to uh, and uh, share those with you. The um, the, uh, we also took uh, uh, excuse me, Victor Stevenson, who is in the audience tonight, if you, in case you have a question for him, from Barn Hill, did meet with the Leadership Council of the Carboro Business Alliance to talk about the management, you know, the instruction management process and, and the thinking and um, considerations that they have to, so that we, that we can incorporate them in as we move forward. Uh, tonight, we have a public hearing and design update for you. And then we also have a public hearing scheduled queued up for May 11th to bring back, uh, we expect to bring back to you the design development pricing and um, the text amendments as well. And just to let you know, our outreach for this uh, hearing has been similar to our previous hearings. Um, we have put signs all around town and using the digital message boards, used flyers and mail notices, social media, and we've also, we did update the um, the renderings uh, and put posters up at the site itself so that folks can um, connect with the images that are in your packet and on the website for the project as well. With that, I can turn it over to Derek. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trish. Um, and just to, by extension, these uh, dates in blue are when the various advisory uh, presentations were made. Um, and I, I think uh, that all of them were very interested, engaged bodies and uh, um, I think we're generally speaking of um, you know, approving of the, of the design, uh, added some great comments and discussions along the way. So this evening, we are seeking um, design approval, uh, and uh, just as a quick summary, we have um, we have gone through program, concept, plan, planning, massing and interior public spaces. And tonight, what we want to talk about or share with you are the final exterior finishes, the interior finishes, site plan. And uh, given the amount of time, we may not get to it, but if you want to explore or, or dig into any of the building systems, we'd be happy to share that with you as well. Um, as usual, there's a lot of material to cover, so I'm gonna go fairly fast with the understanding that we can come back to any part, any piece in greater detail um, later. Uh, so to begin with the building exterior, you should have all received by now the um, the DD package, which is a document. Um, and there are actual finished material boards that I'm, Trish, are they at town hall? Um, so that you can review those and, and get a sense for what the actual finishes are beyond, uh, you know, pixels on a screen. Um, starting with the exterior, it's a relatively simple palette. We have some uh, metal panel, metal plate panel because it's down where people can touch the building. And we want it to be of a significant gauge so that it can withstand touching and, and you know, getting hit and things like that. There is a molyan system that ties into that panel system. There's obviously concrete paving around the building. Um, we're using a very, it's a high-performance but very transparent glass, a Solarban 70 XL it's called, but it's a glass we like to use because of its transparency. Um, and then there are, the, the brick is uh, still in photographic form. We're working with some of the uh, brick producers here in North Carolina to get us the actual physical samples, which they have not been able to get us yet. So I apologize, but that is still in illustrated form. And the reason we're showing two bricks here is the brick on the left, if you remember, we were going for this kind of warm gray. And the brick on the left is one that kind of matches the uh, that initial uh, idea. But it is, uh, one, it's an imported brick from out of state and it is uh, it's about double our price point on the brick. So it serves as kind of a guide. The one on the right is from uh, Eastern Salisbury, North Carolina. And so far, it is one of, one of several, but one of the most promising ones that we feel begins to approximate that tone, color, hue. Uh, what you see in the image is what we call a modular brick. It has to do with its size and dimension. We're using a Norman-sized brick, which is a bit longer and, which gives it a little bit more of that horizontal layered. And we would probably be looking for grout joints similar to the left, which are called rake joints, which give you that nice shadow and increase that, that kind of horizontal quality. Uh, and this one kind of uh, bronzy metal finish is just to indicate that uh, what some of the hardware or accenting pieces might be, uh, perhaps signage or, or push-pull hardware and that kind of thing. So uh, quick uh, tour around the building. These are images that you've seen before, but I just, you know, just to get back into it and understand, uh, you know, comparing that tone of brick and some of the other materials and where they occur uh, around the building here from the northwest, uh, here from D West across uh, South Greensboro Street, and then this is from the uh, southwest, looking up. You're looking up towards Century Center. And you kind of see in different sunlight conditions and uh, some of those materials coming together. Moving to the interior finishes, uh, there's a little bit more going on here in terms of finishes. Uh, and I'll just kind of run over sections, but we do have, uh, we have your typical ACT acoustical tile ceilings in some of the back-of-house areas. In the more uh, front-of-house lobby spaces, we have this sound-absorptive baffled ceiling. Uh, there are a couple locations where we have wood ceilings that tie into this type of slatted wood wall uh, that allows us to put sound insulation behind it. Uh, and that ties into some of the wood casework that you see over here. Um, carpet is, we're using um, two types of carpet throughout the building. There's this larger textured carpet. They're both carpet tile, so uh, very durable and replaceable. You don't have to replace a whole extent if something gets damaged or spilled or stained. Uh, and then we're using a finer uh, pattern in the office areas or the smaller room areas. So this is in your more public zones. This is in your more back-of-house zones. Um, this is the uh, that steel on the interior and here is uh, your sealed concrete floors, some VCT finishes including the anti-static flooring that goes in your IT rooms. Um, bathroom tile, uh, some uh, sound absorptive um, and kind of self-healing fabric panels that go in some of the larger meeting rooms, your uh, your um, hardware system here. And then also, this is the solid surface countertops that might go uh, above a credenza perhaps in this wood and various paint colors. So you see all in all a pretty neutral uh, palette. And then the idea that there will be some accents coming in through the furniture, uh, furniture fabrics and, and perhaps some area rugs that come in and using that as the, the pops of color. So um, it's, this shifts a little bit in the, in the um, library, which is down on the ground floor. You'll see the introduction of a few more colors. This is particularly in response to uh, two things. One is that these happen to be the um, actually serendipitously, the color palette of the Orange County Library system, but also um, that there's some young learner children's areas within the libraries that have a little bit more uh, integrated pop of color. And you'll see that in some renderings coming up. So just uh, to bring you back, you've seen these public spaces, but I'm gonna take you into some of the other spaces as well. So here's entry off of Roberson Library on the right, uh, some of the more public performance and multipurpose spaces over down the steps to the left. Um, and you'll remember this kind of as a plan. So if you're standing over here looking towards the library, this is the multipurpose room from this common pre-function area. And right now, the, you'll see there's a lot of glass, but the curtains are drawn. So there's some activities that want visual privacy and others that may want visual transparency. So this is uh, what it might be like when those curtains are drawn. Um, you see the, the carpet that we were talking about here and the um, stained concrete floor there. Um, inside that room, uh, it is, seats about 100, 120 people. Um, and here you can see the glass walls open. There is that tapable acoustic wall panel here on the back wall. Um, and there is this uh, little um, groove right here where the, the movable partition can come out, uh, which I'll show you in just one second. So different configuration of that room. Uh, perhaps you all might meet here one day, I don't know. Um, but here's with the curtains drawn for that, uh, a little bit more privacy, acoustic tile ceiling. And here with the, um, now it's divided into two separate rooms. So just to give you a little feel for the finishes, I should add that on the front wall, we have acoustic panels as well. Uh, we've been doing a lot of work with our acoustical engineer to make sure that these rooms are all performing uh, from a noise and sound level. But we also have the glass marker board at the front of the room, so you can accompany any type of presentation with, you know, capturing the content. Right across the way, I don't know if you see through the glass here, this mural, that is the entry to the performance space. So you come in and there's a sound light lock on either side, which takes you into the multipurpose room. And not sorry, the performance space, which also is predominantly used for multipurpose. So we do have a resilient wood floor suitable for dance, for aerobic activity. We have acoustically attenuated walls and avoid space above with the pipe grid for performance. But we've also introduced windows that have full blackout shades so that this can be used for other more multipurpose events. It's nice to have that daylight, but you can completely black it out. Turning back the other way, this is the the stadium raked seating system fully collapsed into the wall. So this is what it so it really allows you to have a flat floor space that is suitable to multiple functions. We have a tech mezzanine up here for sound and light boards and things like that when when needed. And if, for whatever reason, you do not elect to purchase that deployable seating system, then this, of course, can become a niche for that serves the larger area. And here's just another view looking across that space where that's the void where those that seating would collapse into. Back out in the pre function, looking straightforward towards the library, I'll take you into the library real quick. So this is entering and your service desk is right on access as you come in. So there should be no ambiguity in terms of where you go for service and information. And then that door just beyond is actually the door from the Greensboro side entry. So both doors come straight in on that. There's a series of group study rooms to the left. And you can see in this space, there's a slightly different carpet and a little bit of color. You can kind of see the hint of the children's area peeping in from the right side. And we are organizing the library, which is a lot of different little mini spaces and trying to give it some cohesion around this center spine, which we're using a walnut, a different wood material to help define that along here. But it's only used in this space. So there's those group study rooms, some of the collections and and the service desk with this gray solid surfacing. This is the children's area. There's this really interesting manipulative wall that they that we worked out with the library to have lots of different colors, but also different types of applications to build different contraptions, devices where balls roll around and things like that. On the opposite side is the seed library. So this is, of course, a place where one can come borrow seeds and to really activate that home farmer gardener within the community. And then to accompany it with library resources and materials that might go with those particular interests. Going upstairs real quickly, this is the stair that brings you up to the second floor. So you can see some of the woods, some of the brickwork that comes inside the building. So it's nice to have that lighter brick to lighten up the inside. This is the sky skylight well and elevators to the left. Straight ahead is the stair up to the third floor. Now, on this floor are is where a lot of the Orange County skills development spaces are. So those classrooms, there's a series of four of them. Three of them are very much like this one, acoustical tile ceiling, a large ridable surface and AV. But just to give you an idea, mobile furniture, so we understand that these may be turned sideways or or you may work in groups or in circles. So it's designed to be highly flexible instruction spaces. Another view of that room here. Coming up to the third floor, the here is the third floor lobby. This is that baffled ceiling. You've seen it in a couple of other public spaces. As you move down towards the large conference room, this is the roof terrace deck here, which you can see out here and how the the brick comes back into play. So it's moving in and out of the building multiple times, but is a little bit of that consistent material from, you know, outside before you enter to even when you step back outside on the roof. I also wanted to share with you a little bit more detail on the site plan. Site plan is in, has been resubmitted. So we have planned for, I think, four submittals to get site plan approval. We have addressed the first one and resubmitted that. But it is pretty much set. And so here you can see the general site plan, and we've been over this before. So I won't go into detail other than talk a little bit about how we're dealing with stormwater. That was an important part of what how the site works as kind of a machine to manage and control stormwater. And we know that's a significant issue in Carrboro and and the Stormwater Advisory Group that we met with was very interested in how this works. So these three zones are what we call bio retention cells. So these are integrated bio. But I don't know what to how else to describe them bio retention cells. So we're integrating it into the landscape here. This system is we're obliged by zoning, I think, to not increase stormwater runoff by more than 50%. We are actually reducing aggregate runoff of the site by about 15%. So it it, you know, you can say it far exceeds the the mandate. We're also designing to the, I think it's the 25 year storm event, which is here now. One of the things that the Stormwater Advisory asked us, knowing that it was above and beyond what is required, could we design to the 100 year storm? So we have been looking at that. And I'll share with you our method of getting there. But these these two here, for example, represent these bio retention cells on the screen. And you can kind of see them here at ground. So there's a lot of specialized planting, all native species that can survive the wet environment there. And it works kind of like this. It's a recessed where it can, it's actually designed to hold, detain, and slowly release stormwater as it's deposited, both from the sidewalk and the roadway, but also piped from the building to drain into these spaces. And here's some of the, to give you an idea of the natural flora that goes into these types of systems. We did look at a way, how could we get to the 100 year storm? We were about 200 cubic feet of water retention shy of the 100 year storm. So we did look at these, what are called soil cells. Soil cells is the generic term. And silver cells happens to be one brand that does this. So we have studied putting in a subterranean system diagrammed by the image on the right. This does come at a premium of about 40, you know, just under $50,000. So it is something for you to consider if you want to get to that 100 year storm level. But this is probably the the best, most economical means to get there without burying, you know, giant tanks. So quickly on landscape, up here, we're using bald cypress with all everything we're using is a native species. We did have one non native species and somebody on the one of the advisory committees called us out on that. And so we didn't switch that one, that one plant to, I think it's this Pennsylvania Sedge here. We used to have a liriope in there just because it's incredibly hardy, but it is a non native plant. So we're using more columnar trees along Carr Street. And in this case, we're using evergreens because we we want that to be a consistent year round buffer to the residences on the south side. On Greensboro, we're using also another columnar, but it's a also a very, it's really beautiful, but a very hardy tree in this environment. And rather than sod and grass, we're using things like prostate or the creeping you and the Pennsylvania Sedge along these areas. Here we have horsetail, ground cover in the bioswale to the east side, and then a Persian ironwood tree here in the center. This was very carefully selected to be a species that can survive in this type of space and sunlight exposure, but also have, excuse me, very interesting bark structure. So here's some of the, here's that ironwood. So it has really a beautiful bark structure as well. And some of the other plantings that we're talking about, these are those hollies along along Carr Street and some of the planting, a little bit of color here, which is in this zone there as well as a little bit out in the bioswales. So you get a little bit of idea of some of the plantings that are going in and around the building. So that has been a really quick pass through. Again, if you want to talk, go into any of the systems, I'm happy to go there, whether it's, you know, photovoltaics or solar water or other types of systems. So let me pause and see if you have any questions.
Okay. Let's go to Randy first.
Hi, Derek.
How are you?
Great. I went over to Town Hall and I got to see the samples. And I have a couple of questions regarding the samples in. Well, first of all, I want to, I want to thank you for two things. I want to thank you for looking very carefully at the recommendations of the advisory boards and mixing the liriope, switching that out and taking up the Stormwater Advisory Group's recommendation about the silver cells. So thank you for bringing those two things forth, because they were kind of, you had a lot of recommendations from our our excellent advisory boards. If you could go to, I guess it's the interior materials. And I love the way the palette seems to be earth tones. Yeah. So you have a lot of earth tones and and the earth tones are throughout. I think that's great. I think that conveys the warmth that that we were talking about. But if if you remember way back when we were getting feedback from community on the different kinds of things that they would like to see and what made them feel good in the space. You remember those those meetings we had? This is going back, what? I don't know how many, five years ago already? You know, and one of the things that came out when when community was weighing in was they really liked the the feel of things that felt like they had more of the blues and the greens, blue for like water, greens for like the plants. And if you remember, it was a wood, blue, green. There were pictures that were shown that that folks just fell in love with because it was like a looked like it was out in nature. And I bring that up because two things that I noticed that, for example, with the with the library, there's the use of the brighter orange and the orange circles. And I'm just wondering if you've looked at some of the blue, green, even some of the purple, the James B Hunt Library, I don't know if you've seen it. It's the color palette there is, it's just, it looks like Carrboro to me anyway. And that's something I I kind of thought was, it was warm, but it was done with cool colors. And it was colors that brought in that those earth tones without being bright and, you know, having that brighter orange. This, the other library that I looked at that I thought was really cool was the Brentwood in Tennessee. I don't know if you've ever seen that one. That's a spectacular library. But but the the fact is that you know that I know what what classroom carpet looks like. And I'm laughing because because the problem I have with these these carpet tiles is they look like they've been used for years and they're fresh. You know, and and I believe me, I know that carpet, unfortunately, I've had a lot of experience with carpet exactly like that over the decades. So I'm wondering if there's something that could have more look and pop to it without looking like it's already been worn for 20 years, because that's what that looks like. And actually, when I looked at it and I I felt it at Town Hall, you know, that's going to have that worn feel very quickly. So I point that out and and I know that this is one of these things that can be decided later on down the road. But I just wanted to mention that. And I think that 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 was it. I really appreciate all the detail that's going into the landscaping around the building. David Markowitz brought out the softening on the south side. And I think you're really seeking to achieve that. I really liked your point that was made about the the brick. I like the lighter brick, actually. I think it it I think it's, it also adds to that softer feel. But yeah, I would, I would encourage you to look at the James B Hunt Junior Library and the Brentwood, just to to bring out the Carrboro colors, not that I have a problem with Orange County colors. But that, but but this is in Carrboro. And we've got a fabulous green that that says who we are. So I'll leave it at that. And thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Let's see, got Jackie, then Susan.
Thank you. And thanks for your presentation and for your hard work with all of our advisory boards who have been doing a tremendous job of reviewing this and making sure it's what the community is interested in. I'm very interested in in the 100 year storm retention. I think the people we have on the Stormwater Advisory Board, I often say if we had to hire them, we couldn't afford them. I mean, they they really know what they're doing. And to me, $50,000 to, you know, to reach 100 year is something that's definitely worth it because we know that one bad storm can do more damage than 50,000. You know, the cost of one bad storm can well exceed $100,000. So I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Um, let's see, Susan.
Thank you, Lydia. Thank you so much for your presentation tonight, Derek. And, you know, one of the things that really stands out to me in this whole project project is the way that you weaved together the story of Carrboro through the the steel and the masonry and the wood. And my first comment is that I hope that this can all be written down and put on display at the library, because the library is so much more than the building itself. It just has such a, your design brings so much historical context to the building. So I just wanted to throw that out. You mentioned about the the brick coming from Salisbury, North Carolina. And I'm curious if there's other opportunities to be getting materials from either within the state or even locally. To what extent do you envision being able to purchase locally?
There is a, the one aspect of lead is the local acquisition of not just finished materials, but building systems and that type of thing. And it's generally defined by a 500 mile radius. So, you know, can you source X percent of your materials within that zone to minimize the the transportation costs and and what it does to the environment? And so we are, we are well within that for all of the materials that we're sourcing. I don't think we have any highly exotic materials that we can only get from Seattle, Washington or anything like that. Um, I don't think we have any highly exotic materials that we can only get from Seattle, Washington or anything like that.
Okay. Good. Well, um, you know, as you know Derek, you already know this, but we have a, a huge um, emphasis on trying to buy local at every opportunity and also supporting BIPOC owned businesses at every opportunity, which I know that you will do. Um, in terms of the glass, I, I also read through the advisory board, board comments and they were fabulous. Um, and, and that was one comment that, that repeated itself. Um, the, the glass, I guess the uh, the glazing leading to the birds flying into the glass. Uh, tell us a little bit about, I'm not sure where you were with this. I know it's probably very expensive um, buying the, I guess it's called bird glass. I'm not sure. Um, is that within budget or it feels cost prohibitive?
It, it does feel a little cost prohibitive, but uh, so the, the, I did a sort of detailed survey within our firm nationwide and then within our North Carolina practice because bird migratory patterns do change from region to region. So um, and so I talked to our folks in Charlotte and those who have been practicing, you know, 20, 30 years here in the triangle area. And um, there has, there have been cases of bird strikes on buildings, but nobody has uh, been made aware of multiple cases. That's not to say it doesn't happen. So in general, you have for bird, bird um, strike resistant glass, you need to develop a visible pattern that is two by four inches. Uh, some of the birds, if they see or if they recognize a space larger than that, they will assume that they can fly through it. So it's a relatively tight pattern. And um, there are different means of doing that through uh, films, which are a little bit less effective because they go on the interface of the glass. Um, and then there are frit patterns which are baked on ceramic uh, patterning. Uh, and then there is something called bird glass, which is a UV, it's invisible to us, but it, it is visible to birds. Uh, um, and those range between uh, anywhere from maybe 20 to $35 a square foot. Uh, in addition to the, the glass that you're getting. One of the things that we've thought about is in most clay cases, uh, some of, some preventions that you can make that go above and beyond glass are to be in shaded areas. So on our south facade, we have deep uh, overhangs that actually shade the glass uh, designed for the southern sun. But also it um, according to literature, it helps with the bird strikes. Uh, the other is to have occupancy sensors so that your lights are not going on at dusk, which gives the glass a more transparent look from the exterior. And um, and then having large expanses of glass. And so what we've talked about internally is would it make sense? Um, you know, trying to weigh the concern with bird strikes and uh, and, and uh, cost to build the building and um, and understand where bird strikes may be happening. Are they happening at the courtyard area because there's a tree and it's a bird friendly environment that tends to collect? And then could go in with what's an aftermarket solution with different film type application to help mitigate those conditions? Or we might um, bite the bullet and say our largest expanses of glass are at the um, that entry lobby that has the glass facing um, Roberson and Carr. To say, well, those, we, we can preevaluate that those may be the, the highest strike zones and go in and use a uh, custom frit pattern, uh, but in those limited areas. So it's kind of a, should we, should we build and see how it's being affected and then take action or, you know, preemptively do everything, which, which will come at a fairly significant price point.
Thank you. Uh, just one more question. Um, when, when you were mentioning um, take, you were receptive to questions about systems. Does that include heating and cooling systems?
Yes, yes it does.
Um, so uh, one, one question, and this has come up, um, a couple of um, folks I have talked to. And I think it's, it's related to the fact that we're coming out of a pandemic. And as you would expect, more concern about ventilation. Um, so I know that, you know, a top line HVAC system is going to be cost prohibitive. Um, it sounds like probably triple, triple, I think you said, the cost of what's there now. Um, but, but um, someone suggested as a way of increasing ventilation, putting um, smaller windows in that would open at the top. Um, and they would, of course, you know, kids would be safe. You don't have to worry about kids falling out of the windows while also you don't have to worry about theft um, if they open. So has there been, you know, I know we're coming far along in the design process at this point, but has, is that even a possibility as a way of trying to get a little bit more ventilation in the building at a lower cost?
So um, we, long, long, totally aside from COVID or anything, we did uh, ask our engineers about that just from a, just to get natural air ventilation as opposed to treated air. And their reply was that in a North Carolina climate, um, the humidity level, particularly in the summer, is such that you can't control the systems the way that you might do in the Pacific Northwest or something that is a much drier climate. Um, usually the way those work is you, you would apply a sensor to every operable window. And if it's opened, it shuts off the HVAC system so that you're not um, driving down the highway with your windows open and the air conditioning blasting. You're not, you're not fighting yourself in that way. And they just said, you know, our shoulder seasons where you could get natural ventilation is, you know, maybe a two month uh, opening. So they advised against it. And uh, but it is true that to get the level of ventilation for uh, microbial, you know, to mitigate that distribution would be you talking about something like a healthcare or a hospital system, which is, the biggest thing is about the air changes per hour. So in this building, we might have six to 12 air changes per hour. In a hospital, you might have, you know, a hundred air changes per hour. Um, so that means you're taking outside air, conditioning it, filling a space and then exhausting it out and immediately filling again. So it becomes an extremely energy intensive space. But on the good side, there is, you know, even for a dense urban site that we have, there's a lot of outdoor amenities from the front plaza to the back courtyard to the roof terrace. So those are all things that we have discovered are highly sought after amenities in conditions like, like we've experienced over the last year.
Thank you very much Derek.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Great. Thanks Susan. Uh, let's see, Damon then Sammy.
Thanks Derek for the presentation. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to be sure to chime in to express how pleased I am with the presentation and just all the work that you continue to do to not only just think, be thoughtful about what this space is going to be like for residents of Carboro, but also be responsive, as I think Randy and Jackie and others said, to our advisory board comments. And just how thorough you are about this entire process is always really impresses me and it makes me more and more excited about seeing this project get off the ground. So just wanted to thank you for that. I think the uh, the materials that you've presented here look great and just excited to see more.
Thank you Damon.
Thanks Damon. Um, Sammy.
Can you hear me?
Now, yeah, we can now.
Um, thanks for the presentation Derek. Appreciate all the work y'all are doing echoing same similar sentiments from others. Um, in terms of the systems uh, for the building, it sounds like the canopy is something that y'all will be doing. I was wondering if um, if y'all have had a chance to analyze or considered um, glass and passive solar opportunities, both savings, uh, monetary savings, but also um, in heating and also um, savings in greenhouse gas emissions. Um, the fenestration you show is, is the kind that keeps solar heat out. To do effective passive solar, you, you needed the coating that allows for solar heat. And um, you depend on the overhang during the summer months to keep out that solar heat. But you're letting it in during the winter months. Um, is that something y'all have considered or can consider?
Yes, so um, this is just a orientation. This is your, your south uh, side where you get that seasonal change of sun angle. And then this is the west side where we get that really daily intense angle as the sun sets to the west. So um, the north, we tend to, we love northern light. It, it's at our latitude. It's great. Um, so how do we deal with the south and the west? Our east is kind of dealt with because we've got a parking deck on that side. So this is what uh, glass on the south side looks like if we did nothing. And so you can kind of see this angle of sun coming in. So three quarters of the year for this desk person, it's almost unusable because of glare. Solar heat gain comes with this, but glare is a major issue. So uh, if we, if we look at this office condition here and we think, what if we can recess it back? You know, just four and a half feet. Then we're able to mitigate that for about 80% of the year. There should be no need to draw the blind down and turn the lights on. So that's one way that you save energy and heat gain. Lights on is energy spent and is heat gained in the building that you then need to condition, which is why you can kind of see on the south side of the building, we have this overhang and we have these overhangs on the second and first floor as well. Um, and on this side here, uh, this is a more challenging side to, to work with. We are proposing as an alternate, something called electrochromic glass, which you see here. Uh, and this is a glass that um, and on a pre-programmed level can darken to different stages all the way down to 1% light transmissance. And uh, we looked at incorporating this on the western elevation of the building. And this is a life cycle cost assessment here. But what it's telling us essentially is that it's a, about a $35,000 cost premium on day one. But over a 20 year life cycle, it pays back uh, just about, it's a little bit better than break even. So in 20 years, it, it does pay for itself, but it is a first cost premium. So that helps deal both with solar heat gain and um, and the uh, you know, the, the cost related issues for those two elevations. Um, we have run some uh, energy modeling. This is a preliminary energy model that we're working. So on the left is your baseline. This is a code minimum building uses just over a million kilowatt hours per year. And our preliminary model suggests that we're about 40% below baseline, which is actually pretty good. And I think we can improve on that as our systems get more defined. We're using regenerative um, elevators, which will bring the inputs down to the model a little bit. And uh, so even with a 40% baseline, we're running at about 652 kilowatt hours per year. Uh, we have looked at photovoltaics on the building. Um, so this shows kind of the distribution of the ray. These are on your, what we call ballasted roof. They sit right on the roof. And these are on a uh, steel superstructure that would be above the um, parking deck. So the relative costs are, this gets us just over 100,000 uh, kilowatt hours per year at about 70,000 uh, first cost to uh, and then the, this one which is larger gets us 245. But because of that steel superstructure, it comes at a significant premium of $630,000. Um, together you can see that we're getting about 347 or a little bit more than 50% offset of that energy model here. So we're taking a big chunk on the, the, the journey to try to get to uh, net neutral in terms of energy usage. Now, uh, and if we can lower this down, then we'll get even further. But we probably can't get more out of our photovoltaics than what's shown here. Uh, and this was just some cost analysis on that west roof. It definitely pays for itself within uh, 20 years. You come out cash positive, even though it's a initial cost of 70,000. When you look at the two together, uh, at 20 years, you still don't break even, but you have offset considerable energy. But you're still in about a $98,000 negative uh, cash position after 20 years on this system.
Sorry Sammy, you're muted. Sammy.
Sorry about that. Um, thanks for that, uh, for the systems presentation. That's very helpful. A lot of people on the EAB and uh, and during the joint review wanted to know more information. I'm glad you are doing that analysis. Um, I'm glad to see that uh, solar over the parking deck would get us close to paying off, very close to paying off. Um, and uh, where you, and uh, in, in your um, 40% reduction, are you including both arrays in, in that reduction for the 40%?
No, no, that, there's no arrays in this. This is just based on building systems, not, not what the, the general um, processes, we try to get our energy footprint as low as possible.
Yes.
And then we use PVs to offset. So this does not have any PVs incorporated into it yet.
So, so essentially of another 20% of, it would be 20% below the baseline if we included the solar rays, which would be very close to net zero.
Um, you'd be, yeah, you could reduce this number to a, to at least half.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that sounds really good. So I guess the next question is um, uh, what, what are the decision points? Because, because you present both in terms of stormwater runoff uh, and solar rays and glass fenestration, where or when uh, does the council decide on, on what, which ones of these to include or how's that process work?
Um, so obviously the sooner the better because we, we're actually starting into construction documents. So we're getting into pretty detailed engineering. Um, but I think it's a hard decision for you all to make without knowing what the rest of the cost profile looks like. So um, the May 11th, I think we should have our DD cost estimate in. So you should have a picture of what this, the total cost of the building is. And then um, my guess is that if we're either on budget or better yet, under budget, I can't say where we'll be yet. We're waiting for Barnhill to help us with that. But there may be the opportunity to say, well, um, it's worth it to us to either use the monies that we are under budget or going beyond budget to get certain impacts that you want. We are also talking to these photovoltaics. We've been working with Southern Energy Management as a, as a, to help us model these and, and give us the information. Um, there is also a financing option. So there may be ways where you don't have to buy the system, but you can lease the system. I, I don't know how that works for you, um, but it does change the cash flow model. And um, it, I believe there is a 26% incentive uh, tax deduction uh, for private companies. You're not a private company, so you can't access that. But if you go through a finance institution, they can get that. And usually they will share, you know, maybe they'll split it with they, you know, a public entity like yourselves. So we are going to try to get that information and just present it to you so you can decide how you want to proceed.
Great, thanks. Thank you for, it's really great that y'all are, are able to do that and are going to do that work. And we'll have the benefit of uh, of having an informed decision-making process. I very much value that. Um, and if you could also just uh, look into the, the opportunity for the solar heat uh, glass on the south face, uh, where you are doing passive solar. Or um, it seems like that you, you would have a different need there for the type of glass you have, unlike the west. And that it may have an impact on your heating costs and that your And that it may have an impact on your heating costs and that you're you're warming up with the sun in the coldest parts of the of the year. Anyways, I appreciate your work and look forward to the next time. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, great. So then after this, we have Barbara, and then I'm going to open the public hearing. We have three people to speak. So go ahead, Barbara.
Thank you, Lydia. Thank you to my to my your comments, and I won't repeat what has been said. But Derek, you guys continue to do like this amazing work. I'm very pleased with what I've seen so far. I I got a chance to go by and see the samples. I like the color schemes and and so thank you for that. And also thank you for taking into account the work of of our advisory boards and taking into consideration all the all the wonderful knowledge that they're bringing forth and recommendations. Mine comes from, my comments come from the TAB. And I know we're on systems and I don't know if we're on parking and wayfinding systems or if that's another conversation, Derek or Trish. Or both. And maybe this is not the time to to bring that up, but I do want to lift up comments from the TAB as it relates to paying for parking in the deck. It could be a future conversation. And and I think we kind of had touched on that previously, but we're just not sure we're going to come back to it. The TAB also suggests that looking into specific wayfinding for the two or three project so that walking routes to and from the project and associated parking would be clear, which brings me back to a project that the town had. I believe when Annette Stone was here was when it was started, our own wayfinding project. So I'm just trying to get information on both of those items, if if this is an appropriate time to ask those questions. Or maybe those questions would be for Trish to answer separately and maybe tonight.
So thank you. Thanks, Barbara, for bringing that up. Trish, what's your thinking about these these questions about wayfinding and parking and those associated TAB kind of questions?
Sure. We thank you for the questions and the follow up on the TAB's comments. We do have under contract Walker Consulting. They are doing the parking management study. And they've been held off because of COVID, collecting the data, updated accounts of the parking utilization as part of that work, but we still have them under contract and are still planning to move forward with that. So that is part of the part of what they will do is the is an analysis of paid parking. So we did sort of segment that out, you know, as a separate study. So so that's still in progress. And then the wayfinding, you know, DOT did a review and for the most part approved our wayfinding plan, which you guys have seen, it's been a while now, though. I might hold off and just let Zach give you the most recent update when he does his transportation. If that would be okay with you. What? Exact status, so I want to let him fill you in.
Okay, well, great.
As far as as far as the wayfinding, you think it could kind of be tied in with our current wayfinding project as it relates to the two oh three and what the TAB was was asking? Or do you think that would just be some like a whole new separate wayfinding? I would think we could tie it in, right? Or?
We'd want to use, sorry, I'm talking over you, my problem. We would want to use our from that plan, I think, and the signs that, you know, will have to meet the MUTCD requirements and be approved by NCDOT, et cetera. I think we would just have to come up with some specifics routing to this building and where we're going to place those signs to tell people when they're coming in, finding parking. So yes, we do not have all of that spelled out currently, but but I think we would adapt or add that to what we have. And hopefully that would, you know, I mean, it'll, you know, we'll go through a iteration of it to see if we get it right, not putting it on the ground yet, but, you know, making a plan for it. So yes, I agree with that.
Thank you, Trish.
Great. Thank you, Trish. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And then Kathy, I'm assuming you're out there. I think we had a couple of people, we had three people signed up to speak on this item. So I don't know if you could pull them over and in whatever order you want.
All right, first up is Naris Levy.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Naris. We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'm going to come in as well. Derek, I just want to thank you so much for your presentation. I also want to bring up the idea of the art spaces that we had discussed before and whether or not this is the time to discuss these, the art display spaces.
Derek and or Trish, is that is this the appropriate time to talk about art spaces or is that at a?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Naris.
Okay, so we have had, we had discussions about alcoves for three dimensional. We also had discussions about permanent spaces and rotating spaces, the ability to step back and look at work. So is is have, what is your thinking? I know we talked about this when we looked at the design at the farmers market space a long time ago. What is the thinking beyond that? Has it moved along at all? Or with it, when you talk to the art committee, did they bring anything up about this?
Okay, great, great question, Naris.
They did not bring anything new up, but we did share with them some of the opportunities which are denoted here with red dots for low. It's certainly not limited to these spaces, but spaces where we are anticipating there could be three dimensional sculpture. These red dashed lines here and here suggest the opportunities for, in this case, and oops.
There are some, yeah, I'm not sure we're seeing it, Derek.
Are you not seeing my screen?
It's not being shared right now.
Sorry, I stopped the share so that we could see the speaker. That's why I closed that.
I don't need to be seen. I prefer to see the spaces.
Okay, so this, in the plan here, these red, can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
And and when we say we've identified these spaces, that we're actually putting in some level of infrastructure for lighting and the hanging system, Naris, that you've talked about in the past. So two dimensional work opportunities here, exterior wall mural here. Three dimensional perhaps here or here on the second floor, we've got more two dimensional space on the main. And then we've sort of illustrated in this, this could be three dimensional as well in the skylit area. We'll get lots of good natural light. And then some additional here and then something out on the roof terrace. That's not to say there aren't any number of other spaces that could be used, but this is where we're actually building in track lighting and the hanging systems.
That's great. I have actually got a sample of the slide bar to go with the system we're bringing from the Carver Branch Library for you. So they sent me the slide bar from Walker Display, which I'll send you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Naris.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's helpful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here. Kathy, bring over our next speaker or.
The next speaker is Chris Milner.
Hey, Chris, we see your name. We can't hear you yet, though.
Hi.
Hey there, you're you're.
Sinister looking. So as y'all probably know, first off, I'm at three minutes, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Off to three minutes started. Okay, so. I know that there's really not much I can say that's going to change your all's your opinion on this. I I understand that this is, it's going to go forward. And that's. It is what it is. But. As we do so. And looking at the the presentation that was just made. There was a reference to performance space mostly used for multipurpose. And by the way, to the the architect there, I don't mean anything that, you know, this is not an insult in any way. It's. I'm just trying to look at this as in the respect of. How is our community going to develop? And when we see performance space mostly used for multipurpose. And we, if you were to think about this in terms of. You know, the the use of resources and. Sorry, I'm losing it. Yeah, I I just don't see a need for all of this. I'm sorry, I just don't. And I I ask that we try to minimize the footprint of this particular project. That if it's going to go forward, those things, like I said, that were multipurpose, maybe something or other. You know, things that are going to get used that we. We look at what's actually necessary to the community. And and I think that the the majority of what we're seeing right now isn't. Most importantly, and I see I'm losing my time here, but the multi-story parking deck made out of concrete is, I think, a really, really bad idea. And contrary to the values that I see that or that I feel that Carrboro, that the government of Carrboro and the people of Carrboro should be adhering to. So a. As we proceed with this, all I ask is that we consider, yeah, consider it and, you know, minimize the the mess that the world, come on, I mean, are we or are we not in a climate emergency? And if we are, then we have to, we have to proceed as such. We have to, it is, there is a. Emergency, the word emergency entails that, you know, we cannot proceed as normal. And in a lot of ways, this to me seems that we are proceeding as normal. I encourage you to look at, and Sammy, I'm looking at you now, I think. I don't know where you are, but. The the impact of especially concrete construction in terms of impact on on the climate is something that I I ask that the town consider. And hopefully mitigate. I don't know. Anyway, I, like I said, I I I know, I know you all are going to do this. And and I I had a lot of ideas about how I was going to present myself and I thought it was going to be really cool. I'm not because it's done. You all are going to build this thing and that's that. So.
Chris?
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Chris. Derek, do you mind just showing the slide where you all did the analysis on concrete embodied energy and the costs related to that? Because I I think Chris would appreciate the fact that that y'all did that analysis. Thanks.
So this relates to building systems in terms of what the structural systems are. And it is true that concrete systems are more carbon intensive than other systems. And but the parking decks, you really have two choices with parking decks. You either are a precast system or you are a concrete system. But when you build on top of an existing building, you're kind of a concrete system. And so just by nature of the amount of parking and program that we were trying to fit on the site, it pushed us into a concrete system for the parking deck side of the building. And so we worked with our engineers and Barnhill to evaluate other systems like a steel and composite deck or a mass timber system. And what we found is that the the cast in place concrete system has a, what we call embodied carbon, about a hundred and four tons of carbon. In order to offset those, there could be different ways, but just to get a metric, we looked at, you know, how many silver maples would you have to plant to offset that equivalent of carbon? And it was about seven hundred silver maples. So if we were to put a cost to that at a hundred dollars per tree, it's about seventy thousand dollars to offset what we call embodied carbon. This isn't your, you know, once you're there, you're not using this energy on an annual basis. That's your energy footprint. But we also, we looked at, well, if you if you wanted to go to a hybrid structure, meaning concrete deck on one side and steel composite on the other, you would be looking at about a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar premium. Or if you wanted to go to mass timber hybrid, you'd be looking at a one point one million dollar premium. And so and you can see here that the carbon, embodied carbon of a composite deck is a fair bit lower than the the concrete. And if you go to mass timber, you're you're not, you're actually carbon positive. You're you're using carbon sequestered material in your building. So it's it's a, it's very good in that sense. But if we take the cost premium and we apply the same analysis, like what could you do with that money? If you're not spending it on your system, you could plant, you know, sixty five hundred maples in this case, and which would be nineteen times more carbon sequestration than paying it to do a a carbon composite deck. And in the case of the mass timber here is about a four X comparison. So, you know, if you're just looking to how dollars are spent, then it may, it did make sense. But in a way, because of the parking, what we call an integrated parking structure, we were kind of forced into a concrete solution. If, yeah, I don't know if that makes sense.
No, that was great. That was great, Derek. Thank you for that explanation. Thanks for thinking of that, Sammy. Okay, so Kathy, I think we have, do we have one more speaker?
We are supposed to, okay, I have two people raising their hands. That's what I was going to ask. So the I have one speaker signed up and then it looks like someone else wants to speak. So I have Marla Benton signed up, and I think that's who I'm bringing over now.
Okay. Okay, it looks like maybe we can see your name or at least M A R. If if you can hear me, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Let's see. Uh, let's see. Ms. Benton, are you able to unmute? There we go.
Yeah, sorry, I was there to unmute. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. We can't see you.
Okay, wonderful. That's okay. That's okay. I just want to thank Sammy Slade as a Chapel Hill Carboro native. He understands the importance of the, keeping the integrity and the charm of downtown Carboro. Many of us knew, have known about this project for many years. However, we did not know about this massive concrete building. We did not know about the location until recently. So I have a few questions for you. During the pandemic, when people were preoccupied with staying safe, feeding their families, keeping their jobs, staying alive, you were asked to please put this project on hold so you were able to reach more people. The community was completely disconnected. We were not aware of what was going on in 2020. Many of, many people uh, that I've spoken with were shocked when this project finally came to light and people started paying attention again. So I have a que, I, I ask you why, when you were asked by people from the community to put the project on hold, why you refused to do so during a pandemic? So that's my first question. My second question, it sounds like you're preoccupied with a few bricks and the colors and the greens of Carboro, but yet you approve a four-story mons- monstrous building with a concrete parking garage in an area that is not sustainable. Greensboro Street is an issue. It cannot support that much traffic as is. What is going to happen to Greensboro Street and those families living along Greensboro Street who already have that road in their front yards? What is going to happen? You're concerned about planting these evergreen trees. So the residents of Carr Street, which was one of the homes we were looking at buying before we found out that this was happening right across the street. Your, so your, your idea of saving Carr Street is planting some trees? So it will cover a four-story concrete building and garage that they're going to be facing when they look out their front door. Uh, another concern I have is it's, I've done research. We've been trying to figure out dates. It sounds like this was finally approved. I guess the final approval came at the height of pandemic, which I believe was around November, I think 17th or 19th, when many people were not aware. You can tell us, you put signs up and people can uh, do Zoom and all this. Uh, so that's a concern for me that this was so pushed. So it's taken 30 years to get this approved, but all of a sudden during the pandemic, it sounds like the final approval came when people were preoccupied with other things. So those are some of my concerns. Another concern I have is how are you going to handle the situation? There's already talk of the homeless people shifting from Franklin Street Chapel Hill to the library location and Wendy's, going back and forth between the two. How are you going to protect and handle when this happens? Because it will happen. People are, this is going to happen. How, how are you going to address the homeless population in downtown Carboro that this library is going to bring? Also, uh, I would like to know exactly, because we can't seem to find this and there are several of us have been working on this. When was this location approved and disclosed to, to the public? And when was designed, this design disclosed and approved to the public? Uh, I believe that a majority of the people of Carboro are very, very distraught, upset, disappointed that the, that, that you passed this. All these years that we have been in this community, even Wendy's had to build a brick building. Even Weaver Street had to build a brick building. Nobody could have more than two stories. Why is it okay for you to decide that you're going to put this building, that's four stories, concrete in the middle of downtown Carboro? That's going to affect businesses, uh, the community, the residents? We can go right next door to Chapel Hill. We can go to Carboro. The art school is going to provide space for programming, for art exhibits, for you name it. They're going to provide some of the same things that you're claiming this massive library that's already at $32 million before it has even started. Where is all this money going to come from? I also ask all of you, I recognize, I know some of you, you've been in the community for a long time. Your homes you probably bought from the research we've done, I'm guessing 20 to 30 to 40 years ago. You would not be able to live in Carboro right now. If you moved here making the money that you make today, you would not be a resident of Carboro. You might have to rent a tiny apartment or share with many other people. Carboro is there, is not affordable. I don't know where they think they're getting the people that need these resources. If you're already saying that people have been aware of all this, it's been happening for years, they should have been on Zoom during COVID. Well, but at the same time, you claim that people need the library because they don't have internet. They don't have the resources. Well, where are all these people coming from? Because the majority of Carboro is no longer the working class. It is no longer the working class. So I have all those concerns.
All right, Ms. Benton.
Very upset as well about that this all passed. And thank you, Sammy Slade, again for standing up for the people of Carboro. I hope soon that a majority of these people will retire. They no longer represent the true meaning and community of Carboro. Because if you did, this would not be at this location. This building does not belong at this location.
Right, Ms. Benton. You're, 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 you've gone well over your time.
Oh, sorry. I just have one more thing to say. And also
You're well over it.
It's concerning that it, that you said, when we were trying to fit this project at this site, we're trying to make it work, we're trying to fit it. That right there should tell you this project does not belong in downtown Carboro. Go with the art school, go down the road. We can still walk there, but we don't have to look at this massive concrete structure in the parking deck. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, so I can respond to a little bit of that, but first Kathy, let's hear from our last person.
Okay, next Blake Bernhold. So I will promote you over. Blake, have your hand raised, but I am unsure. I'm, I'm thinking they want to speak on this item.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
No, uh, first of all, I would like to say, I think the building's really cool. I like this, a lot of the style elements, but um, I have to think Chris is cool. He cares about the community. He's passionate. And um, he cares about the planet. And I agree with a lot of the concerns that Marla brought, brought out. I think encapsulated, it's a giant price tag for space that doesn't feel like it's needed for a building that doesn't fit physically or aesthetically into what I've known as Carboro since 1967. It just doesn't seem like it fits right there. And I'm a little late to the party, but it seems like a lot of mixed, it seems like a lot of space that might get used. And um, it's going to be a major change to that intersection. I'm just not sure why it got passed while everybody was looking the other way and I'm disappointed. I, I drive down Franklin Street and think, what's happened? And now I see that happen in the Carboro as well. It's disappointing. But uh, I, I, like I said, I would just echo some of those concerns. Thank you for, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bernhold. Um, all right, so I think that's all it for the public, Kathy, in terms of who's waiting there right now. So I'll close that public hearing. I, you know, I don't, I don't know quite how to respond to the, the, this, the last couple of speakers and Chris we've heard from before. I mean, I um, you know, I think we have a pretty long history of work on this building. In fact, we approved another design a few years ago and had to reboot for a year. Everyone recalls when the Art Center backed out. But we knew all along, we've been working for years to have a library downtown parking lot that we, that we have. And you know, we've, we've all been around it with each other and had a lot of hard, long conversation about it. And I, I for one, feel really proud of the project that we've approved and, and what's happening. I respect the opinions of, of all folks that live in our community. I know, I know their hearts are in the right place with their concerns as well. I don't know if anyone else wants to add any, anything to that. And then let me just point out, Sammy, before I call on you, it's, it's, so we know it's 9:15 and we still have items. Uh, we want to try to, you know, our last item isn't going to start after 10 o'clock. So um, go ahead, Sammy.
Just one, can I make a comment about the agenda for one second?
Uh, yeah.
I was wondering, I was looking at the last agenda item and we're not voting on that. Is that something that we can just be trusted to read?
I think that last item is the least of our concerns. I think that'll take us two minutes to, to, to approve it. If anyone has any questions, then we'll, we'll move it on.
I guess, well, the one I'm talking about is um, yes, it is the last item, but it's scheduled for like 30, 25 minutes, which could run longer, but.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think the last one's going to take us nearly that long. I agree, Jackie. After, after we finish this item, we'll, we'll kind of regroup and look at what we got left.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully we'll finish this one soon. Sammy?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment since I've been mentioned a couple of times by some of the speakers. And I just firstly want to express gratitude for folks always, whenever people come to speak to us. That's always welcome. And I just also want to just be honest and not take credit where it's not due in terms of reasons why I voted against this project. Just to clarify, I'm, I'm not averse to high-density mixed use in the downtown. My reasons for voting against it were, and I'm not against the library itself. My reasons for voting against it is a concern for opportunity costs represented by money invested into the, the town offices above the library and the, the associated parking that, that's there. Money that we won't be able to invest over the next 10 years, which is our window of opportunity to address the climate emergency. So I just, I wanted to make sure to not, to be clear with people on, on reasons for why I, I didn't support this project and not take credit where it's not due. I did have a couple more questions for, for Derek. The E, the EAB raised, and I wanted to make sure that, that they were heard. One, they were wondering about uh, public water fountains for refilling water bottles. Is that something that, that is being looked at? Maybe it's a small item that's not at the stage. I don't know.
Um, all, all what drinking fountains that we install are usually drinking fountains plus water filling stations.
Okay, great, thanks. And then um, for, for dogs on, on the outside, is there a place for them to get water? Like canyon water fountains?
Um, that is not ever been mentioned, but I, I there's no reason why we wouldn't have hose bibs around the building that could offer, you know, water access and.
I mean, maybe it's, maybe there's, there's a product available that's more than a hose bib. That, that is
Can look into that.
Available thing. And then the other thing they, they wanted to know was whether um, there's talk or consideration of charging spaces installed 25% of the parking deck and at least 50% spaces are EV ready. Is that something that's being looked at?
Um, I, I'm not going to be able to cite the exact number, but I believe that we have, uh, according to the original brief, we have, I think, seven spaces that are EV. They're more than ready. They're EV capable. They, they have charging stations with another percentage. I do not think it's 50%, uh, but of spaces that will have the EV ready, meaning that we have conduit and pathways to install EV stations um, in the future.
Yeah. They've, they've been reviewing the draft of EAB provisions, Sammy, for this last year. I think it's, it's trying to conform with that, what Derek's included so far.
Okay, thanks. I think that covers the, the main points that, along with previous questions. Thanks, Derek.
All right, thanks, Sammy. And then before we close out, y'all, I just had two very quick comments. One is, uh, I agree with Jackie about the stormwater. I'd like to see down the road that we're able to add that in. Derek, just, I, I noted one of the comments was about a, uh, the potential for a rock climbing wall on the side of, the side of one of the the walls of the building. I just want to throw that out there because, I mean, that's what Wall Street has. Wall Street Nashville has that climbing wall and it's, it's a really cool feature when you're walking along that street and you, and you can see people using that rock climbing wall. So I just wanted to throw out there my, work for something like that if it's possible, so. All right, anyone else? Let's see, because I want to, I want to, I think all we're doing is just giving our comments, Trish, is that right? We're not passing resolution. We're not, we're just giving our feedback on, on all of this as we have done. Is that correct?
I think so. I mean, I, I think, and I, I think the main point is if you've seen anything that you do not want us to continue to include.
Right, okay, very good. I think we've, we've given a whole lot of feedback tonight, but I saw Susan had her hand up.
Very quick, um, and, and I guess this is for Trish. Um, I was just hoping to, um, you know, that you would consider, the staff would consider a community climate action grant for whether it's, you know, solar or there's so many other possibilities, but I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
All right, great. Thanks, Susan. Derek, thanks a million. We're going
Thank you.
Next items, so thank you. All right, so, so council members, it's almost 9:30, but we've got our public hearing on the Maple Avenue right of way. And then after that, we have our transportation project updates and the downtown slowed zone discussion. So I know we want to get this next item for sure. So let's do it, Trish, and then we'll see where we are with, with things.
Okay, and I'll just start off by saying the purpose of this agenda item is to receive public comments on a proposal to permanently close a portion of the Maple Avenue right of way uh, in conjunction with the 203 design that you've just been discussing. And I'll share screen for just a minute. I've got two slides for you. You guys want to see that?
It's on what page we're replacing, question mark.
That's our topic. This is a public hearing. The area we're talking about is shown in red in the illustration you received in your packets and is on the screen right now. It's a reduction of the right of way, which is about 40 feet, uh, down to about 20 feet. We did provide you with a resolution of intent, which you adopted back in March to move this process forward per the statutory requirements. There's been a variety of types of public notice, which have been carried out for the hearing. And of course, we're holding the hearing this evening as is required. The, uh, the next steps are for you to adopt the order that is included in your packet if you choose to proceed. We will then have to record that order and a plat associated with the reduction of the right of way. And we do have, the preparation of a plat is going on this week. So the, it will match as the illustration that we provided for you, but it is not in the packet. Happy to answer for any questions.
Okay, great. Thanks, Trish. So I'm opening the public hearing. I, Kathy, I don't think we had anyone sign up to speak on this right-of-way matter with Maple Avenue.
That's correct. I didn't have anyone signed up for this one.
Okay, all right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Um, where I have my packet up right here, y'all, I'm having trouble opening my attachments. But I don't know who needs to, I guess first we need to, uh, I guess it's an order closing a portion of the, I, I don't have it in front of me, so can someone make the proper motion?
So it would just be moving Attachment A, right?
Is that what, is that what Attachment A is? I'm sorry, y'all, I can't, I have to
It's the Town of Carboro Town Council order closing a portion of the Maple Avenue right of way pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168, that 299.
Okay, motion by Barbara, second by
Second.
Randy. Favor say, oh, Susan, do you have a question?
I do have a quick question.
Okay.
Um, I was wondering, Trish, if there's been any, any consideration about turning Maple Avenue to a one-way?
It will be, it will be a one-way.
Oh, it will be one-way. Okay, great.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Susan.
Thank you. That's all I needed to know.
Okay, so we had a motion by Barbara, a second by Okay, so we had a motion by Barbara, a second by Randy. Um, all in favor, say aye, Randy?
Aye.
Me, aye, Jackie?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Damon?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Sammy? Can't hear you Sammy, sorry.
All right, I'm sorry about that. Um, I'm gonna vote nay, just to be consistent with my vote against this project generally.
Okay, all right, very good. And then y'all, what is attachment B? Is that, is that something else?
That's the illustration that I showed you, um, on the screen.
That was the illustration, okay, all right. So we made, so we adopted what we needed to adopt with regard to that item.
Yes, and I just, just, just said, noting that we will substitute an actual plat in the recorded, to be recorded, so, but it will match.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so, so then what we have left are, we have transportation projects, updates from Zach, and I'm assuming the downtown slow zone discussion from Zach. Um, so let's, let's move ahead with that, uh, being cognizant of our time. Um, and at the end of the night, I, I, again, I think that the text amendments are gonna go very quickly. I mean, I don't, I don't know that anyone has any concerns about them. I think everyone's probably looked them over and looked over the reasons. Um, so, so I think that last thing we do will be very quick. So, I mean, we could do it right now, but I feel like we, let's go and get Zach going with this, let's see how far we can get with these two items, so.
Zach Hallican's here to give you an update on some transportation items, and he's probably gonna focus mostly on the bike share. If you have questions about the report he provided in the packet, that would be fine, but for the interest, in the interest of time, I think he's ready to do that. Is that right Zach?
Yeah, I was gonna, some things are just informational. I was kind of just to touch on the things that I need feedback from, plus a little bit about the wayfinding question that was asked earlier.
Awesome, thanks.
Um, so with that, I will jump right in. Um, so wayfinding, I, I think a little bit of this information was in your packet, but we've gotten our final approval from NC DOT about the design intent, which it's not final approval, it's just all of the things we intend to go through and encroachment agreement, individual signs, we've gotten clearance to move forward with, um, you know, working through the CIP and finding funding for the wayfinding. I think some of the things that might be more pertinent to the two oh three project, either bicycle wayfinding or pedestrian wayfinding, those are things we can do. If they're outside of the right of way, we wouldn't necessarily need to do an encroachment for those, so we can look at those separately. Um, and then I'm gonna jump ahead to bike share. Uh, the other items are in your packet, but if you have questions, once I get done, I can always jump on back. Um, bike share, so we have a couple things kind of in development. Um, I, I think at the update I gave back in the fall, we had discussed some form of pilot program that would focus on eBay, e-bikes. We're still kind of looking at that. The current provider for UNC was recently acquired by another company. They're still having conversations with us and the town of Chapel Hill and UNC, um, so we'll be working through that. Uh, we've had this additional opportunity to look at relocating the existing pedal bike hub. So there's that pedal bike hub that's out at the end of the lib of cotton by that UNC building, which is currently vacant, so it's not getting a whole lot of use. Um, the provider has said, you know, if we want to look at finding another place for that, we can do that. Uh, we would just need to get that information to them. I believe Chapel Hill's a little bit ahead of that in terms of looking at some form of licensing agreement. Um, and then in terms of long-term, uh, UNC's contract with Gacha is expiring in May of twenty twenty-two, so they will be looking at doing an RFP process with both of the towns involved later this year. So we will look at creating one RFP to have a unified bike share system. Um, along with that, there are some town code changes that are needed, some definitions for e-bikes, e-scooters, uh, bike share, where we're shared active transportation systems, and then things like if a bike share system can have a speed limer on it, can, do we want to set speed limits for those on greenways or other places? And where should a bike share system or e-bikes be allowed to operate? And I think a lot of the feedback on this, we'll be looking at getting later this month from you all. This is just purely informational right now, and so you can start thinking about the, what we would be looking at. Um, the thing I do need a little feedback on tonight is the NC fifty-four crossings. So these are two locations we've been looking at. Um, we had one location that was funded through the Orange County Transit Plan. We know there's interest in, out of the NC fifty-four safety study and looking at the Abbey Lane location in addition to Westbrook Drive. And so you have some data up here on the screen by these two crossings. Um, we're trying to figure out, we're, we're in a situation where we may need to prioritize one before the other, just sort of ranking. One might receive funding before the other, so looking at things like the demographic data up there based on the twenty nineteen ACS, as well as our transit boardings and the lightings, our pedestrian crossing volumes and our crashes, uh, for both of those intersections are up there. And the other thing I, what I'm thinking about, if I had to pick between one of these two, is looking at kind of the interconnectivity. Uh, the Westbrook Drive connects down to Berry Hill and then up into kind of Collins crossings in Barnum Street via some sort of informal connectivity, but the Abbey Lane crossing will really connect almost directly to what's gonna be the Morgan Creek Greenway Phase One, so I think there's some short-term connectivity benefits there that can get you over to Smith Level Road, so folks can access the school and the sidewalk and not have to go along fifty-four. Um, so really, the, that, that wasn't, all I'm really looking for tonight is some direction to us on, in terms of, uh, prioritizing one of those two crossing locations, really. Our recommendation is to consider Abbey Lane first, just because of those connectivity benefits. And we will be bringing back a different agenda item later this month to get feedback from you all, both about, uh, those bike share town code amendments, as well as any potential bike share hub locations.
Okay, Zach. Um, that was a great quick presentation. So let's have, um, some comments back Damon.
Thanks Lydia. Zach, thank you for the brief presentation, um, and especially for the report and that you included in the agenda. I always enjoy reading through them and, and I appreciate how thorough you have been in, in those regular reports, so please keep it coming. Um, on the question of the fifty-four crossings, um, I totally get the staff recommendation about which one to prioritize, which one to make the priority. Um, so that makes sense to me. Um, one question I have about those two, uh, crossings is whether they've both been kind of preliminarily evaluated for their relative safety benefits and, you know, I, I think as someone who has, I must confess, um, crossed a number of times at Westbrook for a variety of reasons. Um, it's a, you know, it's a very dangerous, you know, it feels dangerous to be in that place, right? And I just wonder, because it's kind of coming over that rise there where the overpass, I mean, it just feels weird, and I just wonder if these two locations have been assessed in some way a- as part of your determination that one makes sense to pursue for now and the other, rather than the other. Does that make sense? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, I think they're, they're pretty even. A lot of that information was from that fifty-four safety study that really didn't, you know, show one as being particularly better or worse than the other, you know, there's kind of trade-offs. There was a lot more, there's more transit boardings and lightings at Westbrook, but there were more crashes near Abbey Lane, so there's one has some history, the other has a little more exposure. There, there's justification for either one, I think.
Okay, great, um, appreciate it. Thanks Zach.
Okay, Barbara, uh, you're next.
Hey, so, um, so thank you Zach, uh, for this, for this quick report. And, um, I'll go with the staff recommendation about Abbey Lane, and I concur with Damon, um, about, uh, the dangerousness of, uh, of that area around Westbrook Drive and trying to cross. Um, but I had, I had two things that I wanted to confirm that are not on the screen. Um, so with, with Laurel Avenue, I, i- am I to take that to mean that, uh, on-street parking, um, is not gonna be considered at this time? Because of, uh, the fire department's concern about the narrow street? Is that what I'm getting from that, or is that not right?
So, a little, yeah, a little background. Laurel, the question about Laurel was, could we designate some kind of resident-only parking and to do that, we would have needed to allow parking there in the first place and, you know, or restrict it in some fashion, and if we were gonna restrict it at all, the fire code would have required that we restricted entirely, and so we're just gonna leave it the way it is. It's effectively a grandfathered situation, like I think, um, was mentioned about Short Street in Chapel Hill, where it is an older street that's quite narrow. Um, and so it doesn't necessarily meet the modern fire code, but they're also not gonna update the ordinance. It's grandfathered in essentially.
Okay, and then my second question about, uh, the Starlight Drive traffic calming. So I see, uh, what the responses were, um, for the speed table, uh, the curb extensions with paint and delineators at the curves and also painting a center line. So does, uh, now it says you're working to begin the final design for this section. Is that taking into account all three of those, or?
Yeah, I, I, we haven't had a chance to have a more detailed discussion yet, you know, I think based on the feedback, we're certainly gonna look at a speed table and the center line, but there was more of a mixed reaction to those curb extensions. I know we did get some input from folks who liked the idea of, you know, creating a sort of little pedestrian, almost pedestrian refuge at the curb there, so there's some trade-offs to what we heard ver- from different sources.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Next we have Jackie and then Randy. Jackie, can't hear you.
Very quickly Zach, could you please tell me what the, um, crossings involve?
Yeah, so it's gonna be a fairly simple, like a two-phase traffic signal that'll basically stop, um, the through traffic, so it'll allow a left turn to, to occur across, and there'll be a, a one crossing for a pedestrian leg, and then the other phase uh, would, so you'd kind of have to do a two-stage crossing as a pedestrian. It wouldn't stop all of the traffic.
So, so it's a light.
But you'd get a signalized crossing.
It's a singleized crossing as opposed to just stripes. You know, I'm actually leaning more.
Yep, it's not just.
Gotcha. Um, I, I'm actually leaning more towards Westbrook because of the number of people who get on and off the bus there all the time. Um, and I think that if we had singleized crossing there, that it would encourage even more people who live there to, to, to take the buses, so that, that's kind of my, my bias on that one. I, I wish we could have both, we need both, but given the, the difference in the number of people, um, getting on buses, that, that would be my, my preference. Thank you.
I would just add there that I'm not saying we won't be able to get both, but we could certainly envision a situation where we have to pick one before the other. So I, I, in an ideal world, we will get both, but trying to cover our bases here.
Great, um, thanks Jackie. Uh, Randy?
Hey Zach, thank you. Um, I really appreciate reading through your updates, um, and, and you did a great distillation in your presentation. Um, thank you for, uh, continuing to look at the traffic calming for Bardell neighborhood. Um, and the, uh, unpaved road speed limits, um, because I know that the, that's of great interest to our, our neighbors in the community. Um, I'm also hardened-hearted by the fact that staff continues to try and work with DOT on the, uh, bike loop detectors. I know this is something that's been asked for, for at least a decade, if not longer. So I, I commend you all on that. Um, and, and in addition, uh, with particular interest on moving forward with the bike share and the e-bikes, um, and the potential for a hub, I think there's a lot of promise for that. I think that that is what will also work well, um, with the, um, potential to, uh, lease bikes and trikes, uh, at, through, uh, a library program. So, um, I, I want to thank you for that and, and, um, and I look forward to, um, you, your continued reports.
All right, thank you, um, Randy. Let's see, Susan and then Sammy.
Thank you Lydia, um, thank you Zach for your very thorough presentation. Um, um, I mean, especially in the report, there was just tons of information, and I appreciate all the updates. I'll be really quick. Um, I too would support the, um, Abbey Lane, uh, for the connectivity there. Um, I wanted to say I appreciate the update on Jones Creek Greenway, and I'm thrilled to hear that, um, plans are sort of moving along, and you're now at ninety, we're at ninety percent design, and my neighbors are thrilled too. Um, like Randy, I was happy to hear about the traffic calming measures in Bardell Creek. Um, I know that, um, some of, some of our neighbors in Lake Hogan Farms, um, were also putting together a petition for traffic calming. And, um, I know that wasn't in the report, but I just wanted to say I appreciate you, um, looking into that as well. Thanks again Zach.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks Susan. Um, Sammy?
Thanks Zach, uh, for your very thorough update for all the things you do. Thank you for everything you do. Um, just a couple comments, um, um, unfortunate to see that the resurfacing of, uh, Maine will be postponed due to the, uh, Wassa pipes. I just wanted to, um, encourage, uh, communication with Wassa to maximize having this kind of issue not happen again. Um, in other words, uh, having a loss of identified pipes and, uh, and as we learn about the NC DOT or, or our own roads, um, that are up for resurfacing, making sure Wassa does their update or their replacement in time. Um, so, but it's great that it was caught before the resurfacing happened, because, because that would be worse. I'm glad to hear about the RFP that we're all gonna be going in on for a shared bike, electric bike system. That's really, um, been needed in our community, and I look forward, I presume that the process will, will involve us in providing input and, uh, and perhaps hopefully even in the RFP itself. Um, there are all kinds of models out there, and I think it would be a good thing for the council to consider those models and weigh in on what, what it is that we're gonna be requesting for proposals early on. And it seems like that will be happening soon, given the, the, uh, when the current, um, contract is ending with, with that provider. Um, and then also thank you for looking into the, why it is that Short Street in Chapel Hill is such a narrow road allows for, for car parking. That's a helpful explanation. Um, I'm comfortable with a staff's, uh, choice of, of, uh, continuing to allow parking on the street. Um, it's a little mystifying though, that parking is happening and the problem of, for, for access for fire trucks is not resolved, even though, this is a weird thing where we, we put it in writing somehow, it becomes real. But parking is happening there, and if it really is an issue for our fire department, I, I would presume that, uh, the current situation wouldn't be okay either. So it's just one of those strange things, um, that uh, is hard for me to understand. And then, um, the last thing I, I wanted to say was, uh, in terms of, um, the question you, on which, um, crossing, I, I, have you looked into some of the data that you provided, for example, with sidewalks in terms of who are the historically, uh, marginalized, uh, community, uh, members, uh, and, and usage of those crosswalks and, and as a, as a way to know what to prioritize? And I agree, um, with Jackie, like looking at the, um, bus usage for both of those. I'm sure there's data which one uses most bus usage. For me, without, um, that kind of information, I'm, I'm kind of ambivalent, and I'm glad that both are being pursued, and this is more about prioritization.
Yeah. Um, thanks Sammy, good comments, uh, everyone. Um, I'll just chime in, uh, to the accolades. Zach, it's so great to get your reports. They're always so thorough, and everything we want to know about every project is on there, and it's, we're so, it's so appreciative. Um, and just, I, I'm echoing the comments of, of the others in terms of Abbey Lane or Westbrook, just crunching all the data, and hopefully we end up getting both of them, because it seems like whenever I drive along there, I mean, kids are running across each of them all the time, so whatever we can do, the sooner the better. So, thank you for that. Um, okay, council members, is that, um, I think that's, um, this was a discussion item for us to just kind of provide feedback, hear from Zach and provide feedback, is that right? There's no, no associated resolution or anything with it? Okay, so.
That's correct.
Uh, sorry? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so Trish, I guess we're ready to move on into the slow ju- slow zone then.
Okay, great, thank you. So we have a, um, Zach's ready to make a presentation to you to talk about. Okay, great, thank you. So we have a um Zach's ready to make a presentation to you to talk about um. Current speed data enforcement practices and um and other kind of information related to the concept of a downtown slow zone. Thanks, Zach, take it away.
Alright, so double header. I'll start with a little bit of background here. Um, so the slow zone was first discussed back in two thousand twelve, I think. Uh that was in in the TAB. There was a. Concept presented to the Board of Alderman then in twenty fourteen after the TAB had worked on it for probably close to two years. As well as a staff sort of feasibility report. The TAB did some additional outreach related to head safety projects for the slow zone in twenty fifteen. And then in twenty sixteen, staff presented those results. Uh we would move into twenty seventeen and look at some more specific considerations of those. Pedestrian safety projects. Then in twenty eighteen, the wayfinding project, which kind of would made some specific references to the idea of a slow zone and really using wayfinding. To help people find their way around and kind of create a better environment. Uh in twenty nineteen, staff worked a little more closely with the TAB to prioritize some of those pedestrian safety projects for implementation. Uh in twenty twenty, we'd had some other conversations that led to staff asking NC DOT for some clarifications. Related to twenty mile an hour speed limits, whether they would allow us to lower speed limits below the twenty five miles an hour. Out there today on the state maintained routes. Uh, in twenty twenty one, staff have met earlier this month uh for an internal review of some of the speed data, as well as a discussion of the police department's enforcement practices. Prior to a meeting with NC DOT. Uh just a snapshot of some of that speed and compliance data. These are kind of the five locations that really frame. The slow zone and I'll show that map a little more on the next screen. This is really. South Greensboro, kind of at the top of the hill, North Greensboro, just north of Shelton Street, uh West Main Street, west of Hillsborough, Jones Ferry. East of Davie and then Hillsborough, uh just southeast of High Street, kind of before you get to the school zone. And looking at this, you have a pretty wide range, at least in terms of speed limit compliance, some of those that are really low. The ready day transition area where you're going from a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit to a twenty or twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. So. Drivers are still in the process of slowing down and adjusting their speed so that compliance can look a lot worse. Than it might be if we just moved that a couple hundred feet downstream. Looking at the eighty-fifth percentile here as well, eighty-fifth percentile, the eighty-fifth percentile is the. Speed at which most people are going to be going slower. So eighty-five percent of traffic is going slower than that eighty-fifth percentile. And really what that tends to reflect is what the actual design speed of the roadway is. So. When you build a road, you're designing the horizontal and vertical curves and the sightlines and things that really. Help drivers feel comfortable going at a certain speed and they will generally drive the speed at which they're comfortable, regardless of what. That posted speed limit is and I will touch on that a little more. Um, so to talk about through our NC DOT discussion, uh up here, this map is both the slow zone and kind of that light blue outline. And then the street maintenance. Street maintenance is important in this discussion because. We can go and change some of these other speed limits on the streets we maintain. A lot of our discussion focused heavily on the state maintained roads. So those. Dark blue roads within the slow zone. So really, we talked through a lot of our data that we had collected with NC DOT. Um and. When we highlighted that compliance issue, they they mentioned that's a big issue everywhere that lots of places have posted speed limits where the. Compliance rate isn't particularly great and they had some concerns with reducing the posted speed limit. Without first getting some better compliance, because that can create some hazardous. Conditions for folks who are trying to cross the street if they see a posted speed that is lower than the actual travel speed. Some discussion with the police department about their, you know, their ticketing practices, which is that they'll generally take it at around. Ten miles an hour over the posted speed. If we wanted to try to enforce more strongly, there are some issues with trying to issue tickets at lower speeds, because that'll often be dismissed as a frivolous ticket, but. The police department is working with the district attorney on that issue. Some feedback we got from NC DOT from this meeting was that they didn't, they'd be interested in working with us on this issue, especially. The compliance concerns and helping us get our uh measured speeds to be more in line with what our supposed speed limits are. But any changes on state maintained roads within the slow zone concept would be kind of subject to their review and approval. And they didn't really expect large areas to be eligible for a reduction. Some of the other things that we got out in terms of things we need to look at if we wanted to implement. A slow zone, really signage and public information, there would be a lot of. Speed limit signs that need to be changed, gateway treatments, just general public information to people that are aware of the speed limits. On the more practical side, in terms of solutions, there are some traffic signal modifications we can look at, things like no right turn on red, leading pedestrian rule. Uh these, the coordination speed or the speed at which you can drive and always get a green. Uh you can lower that speed so that you discourage people from driving faster in a kind of more subtle way. Than having to go and do a bunch of enforcement, which brings us to the next point. Um, if we want to get better compliance, we kind of have two options. Either we can work with the police department and do a whole bunch more enforcement. Or we can look at some physical changes to the street, this idea of a self-enforcing street where. Someone's driving the speed that is the posted speed limit because it's designed in such a way that they feel comfortable only going so fast. And when we discussed this with NC DOT, the the thing they mentioned was on-street parking. Unfortunately, we don't have a whole lot of opportunities to add new on-street parking on the state maintained roads. Uh the the opportunity I think that staff are looking at, we have this parallel project on Jones Ferry Road. Where we're looking at putting that protected bike lane up in that buffer. Hopefully in the next year, we'll get some approval uh for our encroachment and we'll be working with Public Works kind of through some maintenance issues. About a protected bike lane, especially as it relates to winter maintenance. If we can get a successful. Sort of structure in place for protected bike lane maintenance there on Jones Ferry. Uh NC DOT was supportive of the idea of looking for ways where we can reduce the lane width and add some of that vertical sort of delineation. At other places to try to help reduce the vehicle speeds. As well as creating a better bike facility, because we know protected bike lanes were such a big interest during the development of the bike plan. I mean, that was kind of all of the information that I had and I think this was just kind of a discussion item for you all tonight.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Zach. Good information there. Let's go. Barbara, Sammy, Damon.
So thanks again, Zach, for for your report and uh in the background information. I just um. I have one question, I think. So um. When I, when I look at this and how long it's it's been being discussed, you know, we're still discussing it. I think about um things that we can uh do now, like some low hanging fruit uh type items. Um, I think I heard you say that the the DOT is is willing to work with us. Uh some around this discussion, but I was wondering what, you know, I'm. I'm like, you know, can we do things that are within our control, you know, to do um to help out uh with the slow zone idea, which I, by the way, I'm in favor of. Um, but just thinking about some things that that we can do um while we wait uh for some type of. Uh discussion, more discussion or agreement with North Carolina DOT.
Yeah, so I think the big low hanging fruit were those a couple of traffic signal treatments I mentioned. Those are things that we can work with. Chapel Hill Traffic Engineering on, obviously there's some coordination with DOT, but. Chapel Hill maintains our signal system, so we can work with them if we want to make changes to pedestrian intervals or signal timings that, you know. So that's something we can do pretty easily. Um, the other thing is something like looking more closely at no right turn on red, because that's gonna. That's gonna be some safety improvements for people who are crossing the street. You know, it it can slow down traffic a little bit, because now you're gonna have people who would otherwise be able to make that right turn. They're gonna have to wait. But I think there's also kind of a sort of parallel enforcement angle there, as well as there there isn't necessarily a. Threat of, you know, someone's watching it. There's lots, there's some places that have no right turn on red that in my experience, people do turn a right on red, but. It's something we can look at.
And what are your thoughts about the lane width reductions? Is that feasible? Or not in this particular situation as we're talking about in and around downtown?
Yeah, I I think its applicability kind of of within the slow zone is somewhat limited, just because. For a number of features, we have a lot of driveway cuts, we have a lot of bus stops. It's great, I think, on the approaches to the slow zone. So. Places like North Greensboro and Hillsborough and West Main Street where our lane widths are all close to twelve feet, we can take that down. Almost to ten feet and get a little bit of a buffer space where you can use to create a protected bike lane. Um, I I think that's something we can look at once we work through some of those maintenance details with Public Works.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Uh going on to Sammy and then Damon.
Thanks, Zach, for your your information and the links to all the meetings. We've talked about this in the past and and the timeline. I I look back and follow back on on those conversations and and one of the things missing in our timeline is back in two thousand fourteen, the um. And this is understandable, let me preface this, uh because we've had two train, you're the second transportation planner after Jeff Brubaker and so things have been. Um, lost through the cracks and 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 the telephone of transmitting information. Um, but we actually passed a resolution requesting staff come back. To the board with a slow zone policy for the board's review and consideration for adoption. And um and I think uh we could maybe now, six years after that was passed, uh just. Follow through with that um with some of the feedback you're hearing tonight, but also if you could review some of the information that was compiled by previous transportation advisor. Um, transportation planners. And there's a lot in in there that we can do without this DOT's cooperation. And as you've pointed out, there's a lot we can do. In coordination with the DOT so we can get to lowering speeds in terms of um design aspects as resurfacing and bike lanes and all these other things that they. Are saying they would prefer if if they were going to allow for um reduction in speeds. Which raises this other question, and it maybe it's it's part of this broader conversation of what our policy is, but um there are a bunch of street controlled. Uh streets controlled by the town that are within the zone identified as a slow zone. And that's that's another example of what like Barbara was talking about, those low hanging fruits. Um. So we're we're trying to address the hardest, which is do dealing with DOT. I I agree, we should be working on that, but simultaneously, we do have all these low hanging fruits. That we should be working on and within the framework of what the board's already directed staff to do. Of uh coming up with a policy uh for adoption um and a plan, I think we could, we could get there. So I just raise that as as an opportunity for us to, as all, as a council or the board back in then has already given. Um, direction to staff, an opportunity to really do this in a comprehensive way. As opposed to you hearing ad hoc things at this meeting and then us revisiting this in three years from now. Um, let's let's think about this comprehensively with a with a with a plan. So that that is in the minutes of um. May twenty seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Thanks, Sammy. Thanks for that. Um, let's see, Damon and then Susan.
Thanks, Lydia, Zach. Thanks for the presentation. Um, I I agree with and appreciate comments from both Barbara and Sammy. Um, you know, Sammy's mentioning of the uh May twenty fourteen meeting in particular is really important to what I want to um. Kind of express here tonight in part. Um, and I think it's that this this general idea of having a policy, an adopted policy in place that to me. Gets to exactly some of what Sammy is saying, which is. It allows us to have in place a set of articulated goals and priorities that we've decided are what we want to see happen in downtown with regard to a slow zone, slow zone. So there, so that this sort of piecemeal work that necessarily is always going to happen when it comes to planning this or that project, this or that pedestrian safety improvement. Is understood as being part of a larger um um process, a larger project, right? Um, so I I guess so along those lines, first of all, just want to appreciate the amount of work that you have been doing, Zach, over the past few years around. Uh including your work with the TAB in terms of the project a couple of years ago to identify these pedestrian safety improvement priorities, right? There's a whole. Ton of work that went into that by both staff and the TAB to um prioritize improvements, to work with NC DOT, to understand which ones they were willing to be a part of, right? Uh all of those things. And I I think that work is really important. I think. However, that it fits into this larger project of of developing a slow zone and it I think it makes it hard. Um, you know, I think I appreciated the timeline you offered in your in your um staff memo, because it allowed us to sort of remember how much work is happening. But we sort of forget that it's connected by this larger goal of protecting pedestrians and cyclists in the downtown especially. Um, the compliance data, Zach, that you shared in your report and that you summarized tonight for us is um disturbing. Um, but also not surprising, I think, for any of us who walk around downtown. Um, and it's, you know, it should come as no surprise to anyone to see that the worst compliance is, of course, on these major roads that are all maintained by DOT and are designed at speeds that are not conducive to the safety. And comfort of pedestrians. Um, you know, it's also shouldn't be surprising, I think, that the conversations, it sounds like. Staff has been having over many years with NC DOT are always driven by what's comfortable and safe for drivers, right? And and that's it. Um, it seems to stop there. Um, where as the most vulnerable users of our roads, pedestrians are sort of not. Where it seemed to be really a priority at all. Um, and so that. I, you know, because the focus is on drivers and a lot on pedestrians, it means that these conversations end up focusing on things like, well, what's the posted speed limit? And what's the enforcement strategy, right? And not about what are the design changes, as you mentioned, Zach? That would need to happen to make these roadways safe for people and not cars, not just for cars. Um, you know, it's it's funny that the most effective strategies, the ones for these engineering strategies that we talked in the previous bike plan, the two, the original bike plan talked about. You know, engineering strategies, right? Um, as being probably the most effective one for for um safety reasons. Also are the hardest to get done and hardest to get through the process of approval for and from NC DOT, because they own and maintain these roads. And they're going to largely determine what we can do on those roads. Um, so I guess, so I have found some of these summaries that you provided by email and tonight in the report. About the discussions that you've had with NC DOT over the last few years to be frustrating, because. They seem to indicate, again to me, that NC DOT is not understanding that. The priority here is not what the posted speed limit happens to be on a given road. The priority is how do you change the design of the road so that pedestrians are safer? Not, you know, and and that's, I feel like there's just a, there's a parallel, there's conversations going past each other, right? We're speaking past each other. So that's frustrating. So that brings me back to my initial comment, um which is that I think the importance of having a written approved policy for a downtown slow zone. Is that it articulates these goals and priorities that the town has. So that when we have conversations with NC DOT, when we have conversations with our partners at the MPO, when we're talking about funding different kinds of projects. When we're having conversations with the town of Chapel Hill about the way that we signalize intersections, all of these conversations are informed by. A policy that everyone knows, that everyone understands, and that we've adopted and is official, is an official part of our of our town policies. Um, so I would, you know, kind of coming full circle here to Sammy's comment about the May twenty fourteen meeting. It's not simply a matter of what's in the minutes of discussion from that meeting. It was an approved, unanimously approved resolution by this council. In that meeting, directing staff to return to the council with a drafted policy for downtown slow zone. And I would just um hope that we can get back to um directing staff to go ahead and follow through on that, on that commitment. Thank you.
I would add, um, from what I heard from NC DOT in some of our meetings, give me some reasonable hope in that they they've. Mentioned some interest in revising their guidance for setting speed limits. Historically, they'd always used the eighty-fifth percentile, but that can kind of. Create a situation where eighty-fifth percentile increases, you're using the eighty-fifth percentile to set your speed limit. Now you have a justification to raise your speed limit. It's not necessarily what you're gonna want to be doing from a safety perspective, especially for folks walking and biking. And the other thing, I think, when I mentioned the idea of changing some of the design elements, they were kind of, they were very supportive of that idea, just because they know. Resources are limited. You don't have the manpower to go out and physically enforce with a police presence every street. We'd rather. Create places where people go the speeds that are safe for everyone. So I I have, I'm more hopeful than I thought I was going to be coming out of the meeting with them.
Oh, yeah, that's great to hear. And I and I know that, you know, I don't, I don't want to try, I don't want to be seen as casting. Like these conversations in oversimplified terms, right? I I know that, I know that you and and our friends at NC DOT are all smarter than that, right? That that this is a complicated issue. Um, but I I think it, you know, it it just, it just has um. Reaffirmed for me the importance of having an adopted policy, because it can help. Set a baseline for the, for future conversations and kind of getting to another thing Sammy said, right, is that. Things happen over, this happens over long periods of time and things kind of get missed and forgotten or slip through the cracks. And if we have something. That's an adopted policy of the town, it might be, might help kind of solidify things a little bit. Uh I just wanted to make sure, remember to, once say one more thing um that I forgot to mention earlier. On the topic of this draft policy, I know, Zach, you of course know this from meetings a couple, two or three years ago with the T A B. The T A B, of course, never lost its own interest in seeing this draft policy put together. And with, in a sense of, I think, what is fairly, could fairly be described as some frustration and the fact that it hadn't happened, went ahead and did some work over many months or maybe longer and drafted a policy to kind of inspire, you know, what this could look like. That wasn't included in the package tonight. It is something that I think I've shared with the council in an email a while back. So the T A B has done some work in drafting a policy. So I just encourage folks to look at that for some inspiration. Thanks again.
And great. Thank you. Thanks for that, Damon. Before I go to Susan and then Jackie, Zach, I wanted to ask you real quick, who are the folks you, who are the transportation folks that you're contacts that you talk with?
So this recent meeting, we've been speaking with folks from Division Seven, which is Chuck Edwards and Don McPherson and Brian Thomas. In this recent meeting, we also had the fortune of speaking with Kevin Lacy, the state traffic engineer.
Okay. All right. Cool. Thank you. Okay, Susan and then Jackie.
Thank you, Lydia. And thank you, Zach. I too wanted to, I really support, you know, pretty much everything that's been said. I too want to just weigh in that I would love to see some kind of written approved policy for our downtown slow zone. And I also feel like the timing couldn't be better. I think about all of the changes that are coming for downtown, beginning with the downtown library. That's of course, you know, the estimates are we could have as many as 200,000 people coming each year to the 203 project, many of whom will be kids. We will also have a new arts center that is focusing on youth programs, bringing lots of people downtown and again, lots of kids. And what we are, you know, what we're encouraging with these new developments is we want people to go to the library, go to the art center, and then of course, stay downtown and walk around and go grab a sandwich or get your haircut. And we want to keep everybody safe. So at a time when we're encouraging all of this activity downtown, I think the timing couldn't be better. And one other thing I want to say about the timing is, you know, we're coming out of the pandemic and, you know, looking for ways that we can grow our economy. And it's a simple way, but it still, you know, needs to be recognized. I think this idea of these gateways into the slow zone, these queues for the drivers that we're going to soon be approaching much slower speed limits. These could be great opportunities for our whole art community, right, to be involved in these gateways. So all of this is to say, I too would love to see a written policy. And I feel like in so many ways, the timing is right to do this. To our biggest responsibility as elected officials is to keep our residents safe. And we want to prioritize the pedestrians, the bicyclists downtown, making sure that the priority is on them and not those who are driving cars. So I appreciate everything that's been said and I just want to really emphasize, let's grab this opportunity, you know, let's not wait until we've had a horrible accident or horrible fatality, let's grab this and prevent something from happening. So thank you again, Zach, for all of your work on this. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Susan. Let's see, go to Jackie and then Randy.
Yes, very quickly, I definitely support coming up with a comprehensive policy. And particularly when it comes to slow zones. People, you see every day, people almost getting hit. And mainly, I'm talking about pedestrians, but certainly bicyclists too. I think the timing of the policy is very good considering what's coming out of D C now. And that we're, you know, I'm not sure, I've been trying to find out what in the new transportation policy, infrastructure policy would directly impact us for projects both downtown and throughout town. But it means, I think in general, that we're seeing a more, excuse me, we're seeing people leaning more towards creating infrastructure for people for human beings in downtown. So I hope we're keeping an eye on the bill that's coming through, the infrastructure bill, and seeing what in there, if anything, we can use to improve our downtown, our whole downtown infrastructure, but specifically the safety of our roads downtown.
Great. Thank you, Jackie. Randy.
Yeah, thank you, Zach, and I really appreciate the comments the entire council has made. And thank you, Sammy and Damon, for teasing out the May 27, 2014 approval. I think, I think everyone is behind the slow zones. But to Susan's point about timing, one of the ways I'm looking at timing is because we are at this moment post, well, we're not post COVID, but we can see that there is a time that will be post COVID. And we're in a moment of reemergence and not quite repacing ourselves or potentially learning how to repace ourselves. This is the moment to make the change because everyone is conditioned over this last year, year and a half to simplifying on many, many levels. So this is a good moment to do this. I also want to add that in addition to pedestrians and cyclists are the runners. And as a runner, I will tell you, you know, having slow zones is really important because the vehicles very often, you know, run right into runners as well. So I just want to add that and just say that I appreciate that we're all recognizing to seize the moment and slow down. So thank you, Zach.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, Randy. Sammy, I think your hand's still up from earlier. Is that right? Yeah. Okay. Okay, so I think, Sam, you've, or Zach, you've gotten good feedback from everyone in terms of slow zone approval and support and all that, as much as we can do it, low hanging fruit and all that kind of stuff.
Yup.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks very much. All right. Trish, the last item about the text amendments. Is that one that, is it necessary that we receive a presentation? Because if it is, I think we'll probably put it off till next meeting. And if it is, it is. So.
I mean, I don't think it is necessary for you to, if you look through what's, you know, what's in the materials. It's, this is just the third installment of the, you know, what we will be bringing to, back to you to set hearings or a hearing on. So.
And this is the third installment, is this the third and last installment before the whole thing comes back? Or is there?
I believe it is our, no, there may be one more. I'm sorry. I think there's maybe.
And then after we get the one more, then at some time, the entire thing will come back. Like you said, we'll have a public hearing and we'll approve the entire thing. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Well, I for one, gave it a look, but I just want to applaud whoever is doing all these changes and incorporating everything in. I mean, my goodness, it's, it's a lot of work. And I really, again, appreciate the Excel sheet with the breakdown of all the, how 160D has to be shifted and all the new terminology and everything else that's going on. I gave it a look. I'm sure that everyone else did too. And so I hope I'm speaking for everyone and saying, we really appreciate stuff. So, all right, we're all good with that? All right. Okay, so folks, I think that is our last item then. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Lydia, just a quick request. I brought it up at a previous council meeting, but essentially, it sounds like we have a discussion on the advisory board policy, specifically what I've mentioned to y'all over email. I'm concerned about BIPOC not fully being represented in the sense of ethnicity not being captured and our inability to see who the applicants are, who are ethnicity. So at some point, if, hopefully sooner than later, so we can be making appointments with that information, I would like for us to have that conversation.
Damon.
Thanks, Sammy, for raising that again. I would support us including a question about Hispanic or Latino ethnicity in our application form. I think it makes total sense for us to do that.
No problem. Me too.
Okay, so are we all in agreement that we can add ethnicity in terms of Hispanic, Latino ethnicity? So we can figure that out on our, it's not currently on our form. We all okay with that, adding that to our forms? So, so, so I think that's a directive then to Kathy to go ahead and add that to the form? And so Sammy, does that take, does that, go ahead?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the question. The other aspect of this is in terms of what we do as we receive applications. And there's language in there that I would like for us to consider in terms of ethnicity. So that may be involving more of a conversation than tonight.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll calendar whatever that is, what that is. I can look, Kathy can look back at your question about that or tease it out a little more. We can have that at a future time, but for now, let's go ahead and add that on the form. So. All right. Motion to adjourn by, oh, is that a motion to adjourn by Trish? So what, Trish?
I just wanted to, Tina clarified for me that this, this is the third of three, not four. So the next time we bring it back, it will be a request to set. But just take a look at the materials you've received and if you have any questions, please let us know.
Great. Great. We appreciate it. Thank you. And thanks, Tina. Okay, motion to adjourn by, motion to adjourn by Damon. Second by, I think I saw Susan's, Damon, Susan's second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. See y'all, see y'all next week.